I would like to -- the Town of Burlington will be holding the December 7th, 2023 meeting as a hybrid meeting. The governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March 31st, 2025.
As always, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting, but note while an option for remote attendance is being provided, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast. Members of the public with a particular interest on a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. If you're seeking to attend remotely, you can do so via townofburlingtonwebx.com. Our meeting number is (2340) 087-5892. You can call in at (617) 315-0704. And if you are attending online and you're looking to participate, please raise your hand in the webex and staff will send you a request to unmute at the appropriate time. We are being broadcast on the BCAT Government Channel. You can find it on Comcast 9, RCN 15, and Verizon 41. We're being broadcast on Facebook Live via the BCAT Government Facebook page.
We have one item being continued off the agenda for tonight. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, may I take it up? I'd like to make a motion to take Item 7H out of order for discussion purposes.
Could I ask if everybody could move their microphones closer to them because...
Yes, you may.
I cannot hear.
Okay.
I wish you could do that, but I couldn't. Thank you.
Sure.
Madam Chair, may I take up? I'd like to make a motion to take Item 7H out of order for discussion purposes. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six zero. Item 7H is a Continued Public Hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.3.14. Wireless communications facilities which are subject to Section 8.4.0 shall be permitted in the wireless communications overlay districts in accordance with the map depicting the districts and the provisions of Section 1 of the zoning bylaws. Of the zoning bylaws, 27 Blanchard Road, Dish Wireless LLC is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue the Spat of the Planning Board meeting of January 4th, 2024. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six zero. Is that working, Millie?
Millie.
Can you hear us now?
You know what? I can hear better.
Okay.
I'm not bigger women than you.
Okay. All right. Next on our agenda is public participation. Is there anyone in the audience or online who would like to speak on a matter that is not on our agenda? So please identify yourself now. Seeing no one, we will move on to announcements.
Yeah, I got it. This will be the final Planning Board meeting of 2023. The Sculpture Park Committee will be meeting next Tuesday, December 12th, and that'll be at 8:00 a.m., and that will be virtual via Cisco WebEx. Next Wednesday, December 13th, at 6:30 p.m., there will be a joint meeting of the Land Use and ZBRC Committees, and that will be at the Town Hall Main Hearing Room here, and that will also be virtual. The Christmas holiday is coming up later this month, and on that day, the 25th of December, all Town offices will be closed. And a week later will be New Year's Day, and that will also be on a Monday, so Town offices will also be closed that day.
Thank you, Caleb. We do not have any legal notices or nonapprovals, so we will move on to Item 6 on our agenda, Administrative Matters. Item 6A is a Continued Discussion, request for approval of a minor engineering change. 186 Middlesex Turnpike, Lifetime Fitness is the applicant. Who is here representing Lifetime?
Scott Ferguson. You should see a request to unmute pop up on your screen. Send it again if you didn't see it.
I got it. Thank you.
Great.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. We will get to you in just one minute. I'm going to ask staff to give us a quick update, and then we'll hand it over to Mr. Ferguson.
Sure. So this item kind of first opened, well, back in, I think it was the summertime, and they want to expand their parking lot to kind of take parking out of reserve. They originally came with, they wanted to take, add additional parking beyond their reserve spaces. Now they're just looking to add their reserve spaces. And they kind of needed to do, bring their site back up into compliance, so they have, you know, put in the fence, as you can see here, around their dumpster enclosure and cleaned up the area. And I think that the back of the place has a lot of snow removal equipment that's all lined up for the winter. So I think that as far as staff is concerned, they are in compliance with the site plan we have on file. So that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ferguson, did you have anything you'd like to add?
No. Actually, when staff went out to go, you know, for what it's worth, when staff went out to go through the site, it was kind of a transitional time between seasons, so we had, you know, a lot of the summer and winter, you know, staging and stuff out behind the club. And, you know, since then, we've, you know, it seems to change now, and we've picked everything up, and it should be, you know, pretty clean back there, as the photos represent.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do any of my fellow board members have questions or comments? Bill?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't go along with the site. I did a separate site tour. And I guess my concern would be, when the seasons change again, we'll be back to that same condition.
Well, there's obviously some staging that occurs when we, you know, decommissioned the pool deck and, you know, cleaned the pool deck and, you know, prepped for winter stuff. But, you know, like I said, I think it was just a coincidence that, you know, we had a lot of materials being staged and doesn't reside there for very long. But, like, like we said, you know, it's, you know, we're back in business, you know, all the stuff is out of there, and the rear of the site is clean, the trash enclosure's up, and the insurance area is gone, and that was a COVID leftovers. So, you know, we're in compliance.
Okay. Yeah, it just doesn't give me as solid confidence that it's not going to happen again in the transition, because it was a bit of a mess. And I, again, I think that the transition period was a fairly longer period of time than one would expect to have all that stuff back there. It looked like it had no home. So I don't know, is there anything we could put in the condition with regard to timing or anything of the cleanup of the transition period?
What is, I mean, what is before you guys is just regarding the part, the rendition of parking spaces. You know, the previous conditions and previous permits to say that the site, you know, needs to be maintained in perpetuity and that, you know, the site needs to adhere to all the conditions of the site plan and needs to appear as a site plan, which is why we didn't approve this earlier. So system's kind of working in that regard. So.
I agree. Bill, are you all set?
I'm all set. Thank you, Madam Chair.
My concerns are similar to Bill's. The problems that were behind the building were not all seasonal. There was no enclosure around your dumpsters, and that had nothing to do with closing the pool. I think that I need assurances from you, Mr. Ferguson, that you are going to maintain that site in the condition that it is now and that you will remove the snow equipment as soon as spring arrives and that it will not be replaced with additional outdoor paraphernalia that doesn't belong there.
Rest assured.
Thank you. One last question. I forgot to ask about this earlier. There was, there were four kind of silver cylinders that were on the site. I think they had something to do with beverages or something like that.
Yes, I...
Where are they now?
They're enclosed.
They are in the enclosure?
Pull up a picture where it shows them.
With the dumpster?
Right here, when it shows up. I thought they should be them.
I just wanted to make sure that they were handled. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Not to beat a dead horse, but, Mr. Ferguson, what do you think is an appropriate timeline for transition? What do you think it actually takes, how long? Because, you know, like my fellow board members have stated, it has taken quite a bit of time for that transition period to occur. So what do you think is a realistic transition time?
Well, I think the time spent to get the site into compliance may have been a result of, I don't know how I'm supposed to say this, but, you know, corporate process to approve, you know, expenditure on, you know, CapEx equipment, like, you know, the enclosure and, you know, stuff like that. So, you know, candidly, I don't operate the club, and I can always come back to the board here with, you know, a timeline of, you know, how long it takes to transition from summer to winter and relay that information to staff.
Is there anyone online or present here tonight that does actually operate this particular club?
I mean, I guess...
Unfortunately, no.
Furthermore, why is the CapEx shouldn't have to be Avex? I mean, it's an operating expense that you have to transition from spring to winter. So isn't that...
He was talking about the fence, which was always their responsibility. So it was not something new.
I'd like to see that timeline, but...
Okay.
I think you're hearing from the board that we feel uncomfortable with the way your site has been maintained, Mr. Ferguson, and I think you should take that to mean that we will be watching and we will be asking the Building Department to follow up. So I strongly advise you to keep it in the condition that it is now.
I understand.
Anyone else?
Just a clarifying question. So what we're reviewing here tonight is to approve the landbaked parking spaces based on a need for it, right? Okay. I've driven by the site multiple times a day regularly for the past couple of months, have not seen a need articulated. I have not seen spaces in the last couple of rows closest to where these landbank spaces are. So I would just say that is something that I am very much taking into consideration as a part of my vote here, especially given that, you know, we have things before us. We're actually trying to reduce the number of parking spaces in town, and we have had a habit of over paving. So just wanted to provide that commentary before we get to a vote.
Thank you. Any other board members? Is there anyone in the audience, either online or in the room, that would like to speak on this matter? Ms. Ellis, please come forward and have a seat here.
Thank you. Shari Ellis, Burlington resident. I've spoken on this one. You've had it before, you before as well. And I guess I want a clarifying question. Is it just the spaces now along the Middlesex Turnpike? Just that? They've not asked any longer against that. Again, I will agree with some of your members. I actually am a member of the club, and those back couple of rows, I attend multiple times during the day and weekends, and they are only usually occupied by the landscaping company that is there with their big large trucks. Currently, they're occupied with all the construction trucks and vehicles that are working on the Lifetime Living Facility. So it doesn't appear really, people just want to park up close. So the up close spots are filled. The ones far away are not. So, thank you.
And that causes concern, because these spaces will be even further away.
Correct. Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Seems kind of contradictory for a fitness club, huh?
This is a tough one.
Question.
Yes, Ernie, please.
I was wondering, is the residential part, Lifetime, whatever it's called over there, is that occupied at the moment or not?
They have opened.
They have, they're begun, they have opened. I think they have people that have moved in. They have a CO for half of the building.
Half the building, okay. Are any of these shared parking spaces between?
From what I understand, the residents have their own parking, and they will not be shared. But, Mr. Ferguson, you can correct me on that.
No, there are parking stalls, spaces under the residential units.
But they're not, my point is, they're not meant for members of the club. They're meant for the residents who live in the building, correct?
Yes, members of, or members, sorry, residents, yes.
So I guess a follow-up to that, is there, what happens if somebody parks there overnight? Do they get towed?
From the club, you mean?
From the club.
Yeah. If people are using, you know, and I think it's a good point that, that Ernie brings up, with regard to shared parking spaces here, where people aren't going to be there overnight, but the residents will be. So a lot of spaces that could be used in that regard.
Right. So, I mean, the residents, it's my understanding that each one of the residence units gets, you know, one membership, right? So if they park there overnight, then what happens? Mr. Ferguson, that was a direct question for you, sir.
Is there parking in the Lifetime parking lot, and they're a resident?
Overnight.
Overnight.
If.
I don't think we have a policy for, you know, towing cars if they're parked overnight, but if there was a nuisance, I'm sure they would be towed. But I don't think residents in the apartments would be parking across the street in the Lifetime parking lot and then go back to their resident when they have a parking stall in the garage under the building.
Right. But a guest of the resident could be parking in that parking lot, which I guess is where I'm going with this.
So I'm not quite sure about the entitlements of the Lifetime Living space, but we do have the required amount of resident guest parking, you know, per code.
Do residents have stickers for some type of, you know, identification saying that they are actually a resident?
I believe you need a kiosk badge, fob, or whatever to enter the parking garage under the building.
So how do you...
It's open to the public person.
So if a resident has a guest, where do they park?
In the guest parking lot in front of and surrounding the Lifetime Living Residential Building.
And so would they need a pass or a permit or something denoting the fact that they're a guest of a resident?
No.
Okay. Are there any further questions? No? Okay. I'm ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to deny the request for approval.
Close the public hearing.
I'm sorry?
It's not a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, we don't have to. It's not a public hearing.
Oh, it's not? Madam Chair, may I make a motion to deny the request for approval of a minor engineering change for property located at 186 Middlesex Turnpike to pave the previously landbaked parking space along the eastern side of the parking lot close to Middlesex Turnpike, replace the public sidewalk on site, and install new traffic signage on Middlesex Turnpike, and additional site improvements as reflected on the site plan entitled Lifetime Fitness, 186 Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington, Massachusetts, prepared by Vanessa Hagan, Brussels Inc., VHB, consisting of three sheets dated June 3rd, 2016, and revised to August 28th, 2023, subject to the terms and conditions as printed. Second.
Okay. I just want to make sure all board members understand this is motion made to deny. So to vote, if you say yes, you are voting against the parking. If you say no, you are voting in favor of the parking. Just want to make sure everybody understands that. All right. All those in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
I'm going to abstain too.
Two abstentions?
Four denials.
Okay. Four zero two. The motion passes. Thank you. All right. Moving on to matters of appointment. Item 7A. Before we move on, we are expecting members of the public to speak out on a number of the upcoming public hearings that are on our agenda. So out of respect to everyone, we're asking each person to be careful and stay to their three-minute maximum so that everyone will have a chance to participate. So we're going to be strictly enforcing those three minutes. First up is Item A, A Continued Public Hearing, Petition to Amend the Zoning Bylaws, Article 8, Section 8.1.0, 100 Year Flood Plane District, by replacing the section in its entirety, submitted by the Planning Board on behalf of the Conservation Department. Who is here on behalf of this item?
I am, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you.
So this has not been changed since the last time you saw it. It's to stay in compliance with DEP and flood plane maps, and so it's updating those rules and regs, and it comes directly from a sample bylaw that is required. So.
Okay.
Very straightforward.
Okay. Board members, any questions?
No.
This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to make a comment or ask a question on this matter? Anyone online, Caleb?
I am not seeing anyone, no.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, may I make a motion to close the public hearing? Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Okay. Six zero.
Madam Chair, may I make a motion to recommend favorably on the petition to amend the zoning bylaws, Article 8, Section 8.1.0, 100 Year Flood Plane District, by replacing the section in its entirety, submitted by the Planning Board on behalf of the Conservation Department. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? The motion passes. Six zero. At this point, I'd like to ask the board that we take an item out of order. Item C, if I may have a motion, please.
Madam Chair, may I, I'd like to make a motion to take Item 7C out of order for discussion purposes. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Six zero. Item 7C, I need to get to, there you go. Item 7C is a Continued Public Hearing, Petition to Amend the Zoning Bylaws, Article 2, Definitions, and Article 4, Section 4.2.0, Principal Use Regulations to Define and Regulate Fitness Studios and Fitness Centers, submitted by Burlington Equitable LLC. Who is here on behalf of Burlington Equitable LLC?
Good evening, Edmond Perry from Brown Runway. Can everybody hear you?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Perry. We can.
Steve Venancia from Court Development and Management.
I did not hear your name. Could you say that again?
Sorry, Steve Venancia from Court Development and Management.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Venancia. Who do we want to, who wants to go first? Do I ask for Mr. Perry, or do you want to speak?
As far, I don't have anything. I don't have any comment at this time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Take it away.
Madam Chair, I represent... First of all, thank you for accommodating me via video. I had an unexpected personal issue arise this afternoon, so I do appreciate the accommodation. We've been before the Planning Board. At our last public hearing, it was suggested that we revise the proposed amendment to allow for these larger fitness facilities only by special permit and only in the general business of the red zoning district. So that's the copy that you should have or the text that you should have before you this evening. So rather than be by right use for the larger facility, it will be via special permit from the Planning Board.
Out. Somebody wants to... That's okay.
And we're here, would you have any... Is there any further questions or to take any further comments?
Okay. Thank you. We have discussed this at previous meetings, so I'm just going to see if anyone has any questions, since nothing has changed since our last meeting. Anyone?
No, as long as there's a special permit, I'm happy.
Yes. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Anyone online? Seeing no one.
Madam Chair, make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Six zero.
Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend favorably on the petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article 2, Definitions, Article 4, Section 4.2.0, Principal Use Regulations to Define and Regulate Fitness Studios and Fitness Centers, submitted by Burlington Equitable LLC.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Six zero. Okay. Thank you very much. Welcome. When do you intend for the club to open?
Well, we have to go to town.
Oh, town meeting has to go. That's right.
Sorry.
Sorry. I got a little overly excited. My husband is a member, and he's excited about this new space, so, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to take Item 7D out of order for discussion purposes. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Six zero. Item 7D is a Public Hearing, Petition to Amend the Zoning Bylaws, Article 5, General Regulations to Update Parking Requirements, submitted by the Planning Board.
So, Madam Chair, I'm bringing up all the things. So I have submitted earlier this week an updated version of these, and one of the big changes is that, you know, in speaking, I had a really good discussion last week with members of the chamber, one of which is a traffic engineer, and so he kind of helped us out a little bit in interpretation. So the ITE numbers that we had, that the consultant provided us with, kind of were percentile numbers. They were like the 85th percentile, and so they're not, they're not easy for a developer or anybody coming in or a property owner or tenant to be using. So what we did is what I think makes a lot more sense, let me share this, I'm not sharing it yet, is to actually put them in a table. So if you, let's see, we'll make this really big for everybody. So all of the parking regs are now in a table as opposed to what they are now, which is paragraphs in the current bylaws. So the changes that were made are not, not significant. They're very much in line with what was there before. What this new bylaw does allow is it allows, it allows more flexibility for people coming in. The Planning Board may provide a waiver, 10% more or 10% less based upon, you know, what the applicant is seeking and if you guys feel like it's sufficient. Changes from, there haven't been actually many significant changes. So again, parking reduction methods, if you, if you want to put less than a 10% reduction, you need to get a special permit, and you need to provide, you know, use one of these parking, have one of the, make one of these parking reduction methods as part of your, as part of your submittal to the board. And so, you know, that, those are, you know, on-street public parking, car share, if you're close to a public parking facility, if you're close to an embetied bus route, those are all things that the board can take into consideration if you're looking for less parking. Again, you always had a special permit to increase parking, and so that stays. So if you want to increase your parking by more than 10%, you know, these, this is what you need to provide to the Planning Board, and you guys need to make that judgment. So with that flexibility comes the other side, which is, I think, better design. And so that's a lot of what you guys speak, we actually, you know, in this room, talk about when we're permitting things. And so it provides us with standards, better standards for valet parking. Valet parking has been an issue in the past, so this is very specific requirements for valet parking, which I think is super helpful. And then tandem parking, so, you know, the, if you think about the townhomes behind the CBS, those are actually tandem parked, things like that. Structured parking design, so if you're going to put up a structured parking building, you have to, it can't, it has to, it has to look pretty nice, and so there are requirements for that. And then design standards, we have bike parking, what else? And off-street parking facility, so if you're building a new parking lot, there, these are standards. So you have to meet these standards. One, if you're building a new building, or two, if you are increasing the size of your building by 50%, the new parking that you create needs to adhere to these standards. So that includes, you need to have a certain number of street trees or shade trees specifically. You need to have islands, you need to have walkways. All of those design standards, which you can see up here, need to be, need to be included. This is all the same. And then... And then, anything else? Parking lot landscaping. So, so this, again, adding parking lot landscaping, perimeter screening, islands and all that stuff. So, that is kind of major updates for you guys on this. I've worked on this with Melissa Tentakalas, our Economic Development Director. The ZBRC provided us with some outstanding comments. You guys have given us some great comments, which I appreciate. If there are any questions that you guys, that I haven't addressed, ask away.
Okay, thank you. This was a lot of work. I think it's going to be a huge benefit to both the town and to applicants because this provides so much more clarity as well as more flexibility. So, I want to commend our staff for doing all this hard work and also thank ZBRC and any other committees that helped you with it because it's a big undertaking and I think it was, it was time to do it. So, Board members, any questions?
I have one question. You had mentioned that this will apply if the building size increases by 50%. What if they are demoing a building and rebuilding one the same size?
If you're demoing the building and you're putting up a building, it's going to apply.
Just wanted, I assumed, but.
Yeah, because I mean, also, also, we would, we would, we would have to, they would have to update the stormwater systems and if you're going to do all that and you're going to be redesigning your parking lot anyway, so you might as well.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay, perfect.
Thank you. Anyone else? Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I had a couple of questions. Last time I had asked about the compact car spaces, if it's possible to put in a percentage of that, because I think we've seen recently where there are a lot of compact car spaces, but I would say the percentage is not equivalent to how many people have compact cars. Do we, do any investigation of that?
So, I wanted to talk, we can talk, definitely talk through it. I haven't really, I mean, I've thought about it and it's kind of one of those things that I would want you guys to have flexibility over to really do it on a case-by-case basis. So, if, you know, and again, it comes down to, you know, if I'm review, if, obviously, I get the applications and I review them, if they're asking for 70% of their spaces be compact, I'm, you know what I mean, Bill? So, that's, I did see your comments and so, I want to, you know, iterative process. So, you know, that's kind of why I didn't put it in there, but I'm happy to talk it through.
Okay, thank you.
So, we would have the ability to deny a request that we thought was too heavily parked as compact?
Yes, 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 yes.
I like the case-by-case basis.
Okay. The other comment I had was with regard to off-site parking. And, it's been, this off-site parking is to be located within 500 feet walking distance. So, for something like a Leahy that's doing off-site parking, does that apply here or is it something different that we call it?
That would apply to Leahy. Again, I mean, all their stuff is pre-existing to this bylaw, so if they're actively working, is there a specific, like, lot that you're, so is there?
No, just in general, because Leahy tends to do, like Winchester does as well, they find different parking spots. And again, my concern here is item D, where it says if it's at least recorded, it covered into comparable legal document executed and filed to town. Is the case where if somebody has a legal document, then it's okay? Or do they have to come before us to look at the legal document to say, you know what, that doesn't make sense from a parking standpoint?
I think in this case, it would be only for applicants coming before the Board. So, if they, if Leahy currently has agreements with off-site property owners now, you know, that, that wouldn't be the case. But if they're coming to you and they're saying, you know, there's a phase three, a pre-permitted phase three that Leahy has to increase, you know, increase their square footage that we have on the books that hasn't come to fruition yet. And so, that type of thing, if something like that were to come up, we would, that would, this would apply.
How about this? If Leahy has satellite parking, let's say, at the Burlington Marriott now, and they're doing something at the Marriott, like putting a building in where the parking is, and Leahy goes into a legal document with somebody else to do off-site parking that we're not aware of, does that come into play here? And then it's okay because they already have the legal document and we don't say, have any say in the parking?
I think, I think at this point, because they're not coming before us, it's more like if an applicant is coming before you and they are, you know, a restaurant and they have more seats than is onsite and they've got into a, the landlord got into a parking agreement with the next-door neighbor, it's, this would only apply to, you know, new applications coming before the Board.
Is there a way we can manage separate agreements with regard to off-site parking? Is there any way we can address that here or?
To current off-site park?
Well, let's say tomorrow that Leahy's looking for another place to put their cars because they can't put them at the Marriott anymore. And they, they're looking to do that, then they say, oh, maybe I can do it at, at the mall, for example. And then they have their buses going in and out at a far parking lot down near, let's say, Salt Shet or something. And so, is there a way to, to put in here to say any off-site parking needs to be approved? Because if they put a legal document in, the legal document will typically say, you know, you have to comply with the state and local laws. Right. But if, if it's okay for them to have a satellite parking anywhere unless they come before us, is there any way for us to kind of manage off-site parking other than that?
So, so it kind of, from my perspective, it, it becomes, you know, an issue of how do we police that?
Yeah.
It becomes, it becomes a police, like, how, you know?
How would we know? It's, I think, I understand what you're saying. We want to capture the agreements that come up.
So, site, the existing site plans have parking plans and it's for that particular site. So, if there's a change in that and now they're using that site for off-site parking, wouldn't that need a change in a site plan because it's a different use?
It's just still parking though.
Well, now you've got, you've got necessarily, you've got shuttles coming in and out of there.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Wouldn't they have to come before us anyway?
No, that's not.
No, I think the way this is, unless the business was coming before us for some other thing, we probably wouldn't know that they had come to an agreement with some neighbor regarding parking.
Or non-neighbor, actually.
Or somebody.
Right.
Somebody.
Doesn't have to be close.
I don't think we would know and it would be, as Liz said, very difficult to police that. I mean, I suppose if they came up to us and said, hey, you know, we want to do a shared parking agreement, we certainly wouldn't turn them away. But I don't think there's any way for us to know about that ahead of time and require it.
Wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a minor engineering change to the site plan for a different use of the parking? I understand it'd be parking, it's parking, but it's now, it's now basically an off-site parking versus.
Right.
You'd understand that that.
No, I do understand.
Would be an onsite parking.
Yes, I understand exactly what you're getting at. I just don't know how we would.
Maybe we could figure out how other folks do it, maybe with Winchester Hospital, they do it with.
The other question is, so what is the?
Do you understand the question?
I do. So, what I'm wondering is, what is the problem you're trying to solve?
The problem I'm trying to solve is storage loss or off-site parking that would not, is not per this current onsite parking plan. So, for example, the Leahy's a great one at Marriott, right? So, there was an unknown agreement where that bottom parking lot has Leahy cars and shelves, which is not typical for that area and for people crossing into the Marriott, but we had no idea about that, right? So, is there a way to say, when, when that was approved, it was for onsite Leahy parking and that bottom area is for banquet parking where that would happen occasionally and not have all the traffic coming in and we might do something different to put in a speed bump or to, to limit the number of cars or some situation like that? So, I think the problem I'm trying to solve is how do you, how do you ensure that any off-site parking is managed through a minor engineering change so we can understand the impacts and the unintended consequences of something like that?
So, to Steph. So, anybody can set up a parking lot on their property that wants to? Because this is, this is income-producing, so it's almost like a business.
Right.
I didn't.
They can't create a new parking lot, but they can take their existing parking lot and monetize it, I guess.
Yeah, that's what, well, I understand that and that's what I'm, really? I mean.
So, well, I mean, so.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Liz, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's, it's just, it's tough. So, we want to encourage shared parking because we don't want more.
But we want to permit that also, the shared parking.
Yes, yes, for, for applicants coming in, but I can't, I can't keep track of, I can't hunt down Leahy, you know, and, or whoever, Northlum, whoever, you know, the mall, I don't know. But I, you know, so that's the, you know, that.
I think when they come before us.
Science went down with Marriott was, is that something that, you know how we, they were gonna, Marriott would use it on the weekends when they weren't there? Is that in the agreement or is that like a side?
That's, that's in the, in the, well.
We don't even, we don't know.
I'm just saying if it was.
If they were before us now and the life science building was coming in, they would be before us for some other matter and therefore, we would discuss and approve or not approve their shared parking plan. I think Liz's point is, would we like to capture all of these so we know what's going on? Sure, but that's very difficult. How do we do that? Because there's no way for us to know that this is happening and we do not have the ability or the authority to police it.
So, maybe, what I'm looking at is maybe just some language in here that, you know, any shared parking would be a, considered a minor engineering change and then that kicks off whatever process to do that.
And then I suppose, in a way, if you do that, it's still kind of on an honor system because if they're not coming before us, we can't.
Then there's activity that you could say, hey, I'm sorry about this. And then you could say, if we go back to the bylaw, you say that this new shared parking that now you're getting monetary, you know, instead of being onsite parking for your business, now someone else is coming in paying you to use it. That's not, you know, that's a change of, you know, plan, right? So, that gives us that hook in there, at least the building inspector can say, this is in the bylaw and that's the, that's the enforcement that you have, the ability to do that, at least to come in so we can change the minor engineering change and do what we have to to make sure traffic and parking and everything is lined up well.
So, Bill, where's, what number specifically are you looking at?
It's four, off-site parking, A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Okay.
Probably all eight, yeah.
Okay. 725 dot four.
So, maybe, separate from or in conjunction with shared parking provisions and an applicant may use off-site parking, through the use of a minor engineering change to satisfy their parking requirements. That's what you're.
So, I'm going to ask you when I get there, I'm going to make everybody online dizzy, but here we are, 725.
For the top, right, number four, off-site parking in the paragraph at the beginning. Separate from or in conjunction with shared parking provisions, an applicant may use off-site parking, and I'm adding, through the use of a minor engineering change to satisfy their parking requirements.
I'd be happy with that.
Understanding that it may happen without our knowing.
Sure, absolutely. As a lot of stuff does.
Yeah, that's true.
So, I would just want to talk through that a little bit, only because minor engineering change usually, it's, it's.
If that's not, yeah, if that's not the correct vehicle, tell me what is. I'm not, I threw that out there.
It's hard because there kind of isn't.
There isn't one, okay. Why wouldn't it be a minor engineering? Because it's not changing.
It's not changing anything physical on the site. You're not changing, so if the, a minor change is like a minor.
May use off-site parking with the permission of the Planning Board?
Or direct.
Is there like a?
Director, like if I, can they inform the planning staff and then, like, I mean, like, you trust me?
Well, that's the problem, if you have certain.
No, I know, I know. It's, it's hard because I don't know how, what vehicle we would have to do that, but I can tell you that the description, a minor engineering change is a minor site plan review.
Okay, how's this? Separate from or in conjunction with shared parking provisions, an applicant may come to the Planning Board to request the use of off-site parking to satisfy their parking requirements. I'm not saying, I don't know that I even want them to do that. I'm just saying, I think that's what Bill is asking for.
Yes, that is what Bill is asking for, I understand.
Does it make sense to bring this to Town Council with the understanding that, you know, if Bill's needs are satisfied, that you have our approval, where they can, you know?
In other words.
Construct the language such as Bill is describing? Because Town Council would obviously have, you know, a little bit better knowledge of us with contract law. So, we would say approved as amended per the understanding of.
With the approval of Town Council.
Yeah, with the approval of the Town Council. And, because we could sit here and try to rework the wheel, but if Town Council says, hey, you know, this isn't going to fly, we're not really doing our job.
I'm not opposed to it. Whatever, it's up to you guys, that's how.
Well, how many, how many Board members would like to see this addition made?
I think I would. I think it makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. Therefore, it sounds like a majority of the Board would like to see that addition made. So, let's, can we vote on it with the understanding, I'll suggest some language and then if Town Council doesn't like the language, we will trust our director to work with Town Council to fix the language with the same intent.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah. The other thing I would caveat, I would say, is that our bylaw's never static.
Yes.
So, this.
We can always fix it.
We can always fix it in, you know, in May and if it's minor, it's not, it's, you know.
I understand. So, I'm going to suggest the wording as follows. Separate from or in conjunction with shared parking provisions, an applicant may come to the Planning Board in order to use off-site parking to satisfy their parking requirements. And then we will run that language by Town Council and see if it flies.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair.
Sound okay?
Perfect.
All right, let's vote on it, so we'll vote on it as amended. Did I ask the, did I ask if there was anyone in the audience?
No, we still are in the public hearing.
Yeah, so we need to ask, is there anyone in the audience, online or in the room who would like to speak on this matter? Ms. Ellis?
The whole thing.
Come. Well, first I'm going to ask you, do you want to speak on that specific matter?
No.
Okay, fine, now the whole thing.
No, Sherri Ellis, Chair of the ZBRC, so speaking in that aspect at the moment. So, I had sent to Liz and Planning some comments from a few of the members from ZBRC, some of which have been incorporated, others which may or may not be valid. But I had, still had a few concerns on this and I've had a couple of folks comment that specifically with regard to the goal of trying to reduce parking and yet then requiring medians in the parking lots for landscaping, which then increases the overall size of the parking, also makes it very difficult for landscaping companies to do their thing. And with that regard, also has solar been considered instead of shade trees, whereas in, that would take up a lot less landscaping, a couple of poles and things as opposed to these landscaping islands with trees and then having to figure out how to get the water runoff out of that. That seems to be creating a problem in the sense of you're increasing your overall parking.
I think the idea was to sort of deal with heat island effect and provide some green space as well as it's more visually attractive.
It's a balance, I, I get it. And I just don't know if solar has been considered.
You mean solar panels instead of trees? That provides shade?
Overhead solar.
So, I can speak to, our solar bylaw in the general biz, in, in commercial areas, we do allow solar.
Okay, so they could choose, an applicant could choose to do that instead of the landscaping or would they still have to do landscaping? Because that, again, would reduce, I think, heat island effect in the sense of.
I don't know if it reduces heat island effect.
In this, in this.
Do you want to look at a tree or a solar?
Well, that's what I didn't know. If they wanted to put in solar to cover their parking lot at the top of the parking structure at Oracle, you know, that's a structure instead of the ground. But if someone wanted to put in solar on a parking lot instead of landscaped trees, is that an option?
I do not know the answer to that question.
I mean, I'd want to see that before.
I would definitely want to see that.
I mean, just get some carte blanche approval to put solar beams anywhere.
I've seen it, is that good or not good?
Well, that's what, that's the question. I mean, I didn't know if that was considered or not at all. Well, that's what, that's the question, I mean, I didn't know if that was considered or not at all.
We're escaping around the edge of it.
I think the answer to your question is, we understand what you're asking, and we don't want to do it.
Well, that's fine, I just, the question was, was it considered? Okay, that's, asked, answered, that's quick.
But honestly, Sherri, I, to be honest with you, I think it's a great, on top of a structure.
Oh, yes, but that's different.
I think that's a great, but it's different.
And we have that intent.
It is different, it's different than having.
Okay, move on, that's good, that's fine. I mean, I had some more specific, like, minor, or not minor, but.
Wording changes?
Well, wording changes or questions, as far as the handicap spaces.
Where are you in the, because you're looking.
In parking space and aisle dimension, seven point two point three.
Seven point two point three, hold on a second.
I mean, I don't know if you want me to go through all of these or not, but, so the figure there is for, I assume, standard car spaces, and then retail is listed as number three, so is retail not part of the standard? They're different dimensions.
That is actually an existing bylaw, that's in the bylaw, so it basically is saying that retail spaces, that we don't want anybody coming to us with compact spaces in a retail area, so that was.
So it's, okay.
Yeah, it's already in there, yep. Nope, it's a reasonable, good question.
And as far as the handicap, that's not a term that they use anymore? It's accessible parking spaces?
Ah, thank you, Sherri.
And is there any allowance for van spaces?
I don't know what the Architectural Access Board has, but I'm sure that that's all in there. There's probably a certain number of van spaces.
Okay.
Thank you, that's an awesome catch.
Okay, thank you, anything else?
And I guess back to the offsite parking, not that it was related to what you were talking about, but that would be exclusive of any accessible spaces, correct? They're, the accessible.
The accessible spaces have to be closest to the door.
It doesn't say that there?
Well, offsite parking cannot be used for accessible spaces, because the accessible spaces by definition have to be closest to the.
It's obvious, but it wasn't.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
No, it's, it's been brought up before, but it is covered.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and in some of these areas, well, first, I didn't know what stacked parking and tandem parking is. So I don't know if those are industry standards, that everybody knows that, but I just didn't know.
Okay.
So I don't know if they needed to be defined, or, that's beside that. But in some of these areas, specifically in that section, seven point two point seven, you're listing conditions, and I don't know whether those conditions, if you have to meet all of them, or any of them. So, like, in that stacked and valet parking, you have the initial paragraph, and then you have A, B, C, D, E. Do you have to meet all of those conditions, or just any of them?
Hold on. So.
I believe they have to meet all of the conditions.
I would read it as all of them. Oh, but we don't want them to.
Why not? Why would we not want them to meet all A through E? That's what I thought.
I would want all of those.
I do.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
I'm thinking of another A, B, C section in my brain. Yes.
Answer your question, yes, they must meet all of them.
Yes.
So should that be included in there?
I mean, that's how it reads.
That's what I thought it said.
So, we're, we're in the offsite parking, that was from September, this is my bylaw from September, essentially.
I think it, the way it's, I think the way it's phrased, they are required to meet all of them.
We're, we're at stacked and valet parking.
Yes, seven point.
I'm trying to edit as you're talking, and it's hard.
Seven point two point seven, number one.
Yes.
I'm gonna stop sharing, Caleb, and I'm gonna have you share. Um, seven, two, seven.
I mean, if, if you think it's more clear, we could say where the following conditions are met, and then list them.
Where all of the following conditions are met?
I'm fine with that.
As opposed to just picking one of them? It just makes it clear that you have to do all of them, as opposed to, well, I've gotten these three, is that enough?
Yeah, I'm fine with adding that.
Makes it easier, right. It's very, very clear that way.
I'm all about it.
Okay.
And, and in that same section?
Okay.
You have, about halfway through that first paragraph, you have a legal instrument must be filed with the town of Burlington, ensuring that an attendant will always be present when the lot is in operation. That also is the same thing as section A.
So I have a, are you saying I have a duplicate?
Right, and actually, I think section E is the same thing.
You're losing me.
I'm just very.
You've lost me.
No, the number E says for them to park, first, in the paragraph, it says they have to be present. Those would be two different things. Present does not mean you're there to park. So we're saying you have to be both, there has to be someone there actually, like, present, and then there has to be someone available to park. It could be the same person that's present and available to park, but if you only have one of those, if you only have them present, it could be some, you could have a sixteen-year-old who doesn't have a license, who can't park a vehicle. So you definitely still want E in there.
I would assume that an attendant in a valet parking is parking the car.
Somebody could be collecting tickets, somebody could be actually parking cars.
All right, just making things clear.
Okay.
The same thing with the tandem parking, is it, all of those conditions have to be met?
Yes, that, I think it's clear, may allow under the following conditions.
Okay.
And again, these are at our discretion, it's, we may allow it, so it's not like they can just do this on their own.
Yeah, and for tandem parking, so specifically for two, for, for multifamily dwelling units, or townhomes, you, you need to have two spaces, but one of those spaces can be counted as your garage, so then, that's why they would can be considered tandem, because you would have, your garage would be a space, and then your driveway would be a space, and so that's why there's discussion about dwelling units in here, if that helps you visualize it, Sherri. Because I had to think about it too, when I was, when I was, when I was going through it, kind of. That's, that's why, and then as far as the, up to seventy-five percent E, which is kind of confusing, so if you think about it, again, the townhomes behind CBS, you know, all of those units, they all have garage spaces as their one parking space, and then their, their driveway is space two, but you, we also want to require them to have guest parking, so that's why it says up to seventy-five percent of the total off-street parking can be tandem, so you need to have enough parking for guests, is, if that's.
Right, I get that.
Yep.
Okay, Sherri, anything else?
A couple more things, then I'll get out of your way.
It's okay, no, these are good things.
In, and I don't know if this makes any bit of difference, but in seven point four point seven, applicability.
Wait for us to get there. Seven point four point seven, okay, go ahead.
Under one applicability. The last three, B, C, and D, all talk about increase in size of the parking lot, this addition to, in regard to renovating, landscaping, things like that, is it, are you looking for, and this is a question I just don't know, you're looking for the overall size of the parking lot increase, or the number of spaces? Because sometimes, will they restripe the parking lot and get more spaces? But it does increase the size of the lot.
It says in size.
Well, that's, that's, do you mean the size? Or do you mean, you know, if they somehow or another restripe their parking lot, and they went from eighty spaces to eighty-five spaces?
Well, it, it's, it's an increase of fifty percent, so you're not gonna, if you have eighty spaces, you're not gonna increase it to a hundred and twenty.
So you really mean the size, okay.
I just restriped.
That's what I just wanted to make sure of that one, okay. And I think that. That was it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sherri, I actually really appreciate all this stuff.
Yes, you've done a lot of work on this, too, we appreciate it. Okay, so where are we now? Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none.
Oh, wait, Melissa Tentaklis just raised her hand.
I'm sorry, oh, okay, Ms. Tentaklis?
There should be a request, Melissa, in the middle of your screen.
Yes, I just wanted to kind of commend the planning staff and board for kind of going through and really taking this on and addressing this. I think, you know, the idea in thinking through this, I think, from an economic development and kind of smart land use choices, part of what I think about is how to optimize parking, not necessarily limit it, you know, reduce or grow parking, but really try to optimize it. And I think with the flexibility that's provided in here, and more of kind of ideas for sharing and mobility and walking through the parking that's embedded here in some of the environmental pieces, it's been, you know, a really strong step in the right direction, and I'm really encouraged, so I wanted just to share that with the board.
Thank you very much. Okay.
There is.
Oh, yes?
Yeah.
Of course.
You forwarded us some comments from Mike Murray, representative of one of the large property owners of the town.
Yes, I did.
Were you able to satisfy any of it?
So I did, so I did respond to him, I don't reme, I don't.
Did he get back to you?
From what I, from my email, right, from my, I'm looking, I don't have a response from him, but I did answer all of his, all of his concerns. And so, you know, I, I think, for me, it's a kind of a give and take, so, you know, we are giving kind of property owners a little bit more flexibility, but at the same time, with that flexibility, you need to provide us with a better design.
Right.
So, it's, it's, you know, it's a give and take, so that's essentially why I come down.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Did you vote yes, or did you vote abstained?
I'm abstaining.
Abstained, so six, zero, one.
Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend favorably on the petition to amend the zoning bylaws, Article Five, General Regulations, by amending Section seven point one point zero, access through other districts, seven point two point zero, general parking requirements of purpose, and seven point four point zero, general landscaping requirements moved by the planning board as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Six, zero, one. Okay, now we are going to go back to earlier in our agenda, because as you may have noted, we took things out of order, we are now going to go back to item seven B.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take item seven B out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, seven, zero. Still looking for B on my agenda, oh, here we go.
Okay.
Item seven B is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaws, Article Four, Use Regulations, Section four point two point zero, Principal Use Regulation Schedule, by adding a new Section four point two point five point eleven, related to automobile dealership use, said new Section four point two point five, two point eleven, to be permitted by special permit in the general business district by right in the Water Resource District, and otherwise prohibited in all other districts, submitted by Herb Chambers Ninety-three Cambridge Street, LLC. And who is here on behalf of this matter?
Good evening, Madam Chair, and board members, for the record, attorney Mark Vaughn with law firm of Reema Ronstein, representing the applicant, Herb Chambers Companies, Chris Sparagis, engineer with Williams and Sparagis, who I think you've met before, also John Welch, who's with the Herb Chambers Companies, has been part of the prior meetings that we've had. So, here in connection with the warrant article that, I feel like, a little bit like Groundhog Day on this one, I know we've had multiple opportunities to have this same exact language before the, the board. Obviously, we were at the, it was in track of months here, we'll be in the September town meeting, at which time, we decided to not proceed to allow us an opportunity to engage in further dialogue and have a meeting with the neighbors, which we did have. I, I do not really have a lot of additional information to, to share with the board at this time. I know that at the last meeting, we went through a presentation, which I think you all have listened to and heard. I did want to address a couple of items, though, that had come up at that prior meeting, if I could, Madam Chair, if you could just indulge me.
Yes, please.
So, I know there was some commentary about the residential lot, so again, part of the land assemblage that was acquired by Herb Chambers from the prior owner, Passon Weiss, was all, all the properties, including this residential lot that goes out onto Arlington Road. So, this warrant article has no bearing on that at all, it, it doesn't affect the, the residential zoning district. We, in, in speaking with Herb Chambers, there's no intention of expanding onto that residential lot. We would agree as part of any permitting for the dealership, if we're fortunate to be before the board for permitting, we would not seek to rezone that R O land to business or commercial zone, or seek to provide any access out to Arlington Road for the dealership. It's never been proposed, and we would agree not to propose it. So, I think it's been suggested, perhaps by some of the neighbors, that there might have been a prior attempt to do that, I think by the prior owner, Passon Weiss, that's at least how I'm interpreting it. It's certainly something that we've never talked about or attempted to do. So, I just want to go on the record of saying that, that, you know, and I think as Joe may have pointed out before, that the zoning bylaws actually prohibit it anyway, we can't go through a residential zone, but.
You can't go through, but I have a question about that, so you said that you would not seek to change the zoning on that piece of property. What, how is that? What legal mechanism is there to ensure that?
Well, if, if we are, if, if the warrant article passes, we then have to come back before the board for site plan and special permit approval. So this, this use requires a special permit from the board.
Right.
If the board wanted to put a condition in indicating as much, then we're not objecting to it, and we're indicating that, so.
Right, but if this, the property exists, it's zoned residential, what's to stop Herb Chambers five years down the road, say, from coming back and saying, I want to go to town meeting and rezone that property for X, Y, Z purpose?
Town meeting stops it.
Or they don't?
Yeah.
So, there's no way.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that, we'll provide whatever, if, if the board would like us to provide some type of a covenant, or, I mean, I'm going on record as indicating it, I know the tape is rolling, and you can play this back in the future if you need to. We have no intention of seeking to rezone that property from its R O designation today. We can't go out to Arlington Road for any type of access either, so.
I understand that, that I know you can't do, because that's prohibited in our bylaw. I guess, I'm gonna, if you would, I'm gonna ask the other lawyer on our board. Joe, is there a way we can ensure that that residential piece of property is never rezoned to anything other than residential, or is that impossible, because the request can always be made?
I think the possible way to do it would be, and I mentioned it last time, would be a covenant of some sort. Now, if you sold, you could put the covenant on, and it would be sold with the covenant. Now, the current owners, maybe a way to incorporate a covenant into that, but it would have to be on a, it would have to be a deeded covenant.
The covenant could state that it could not change the zoning.
It would run with the land, not the owner, so it would, yeah, you'd have to have a covenant.
And there would be no way to request the town meeting do anything with that?
Town meeting would have nothing to do with it, it would be a private restriction.
I just want to understand it, how we would achieve that.
I know how you would do it, if we were selling it to them, we could put a covenant on, that it'd never be used for that purpose. Whether they can put it on themselves, probably, we should be able to do the same thing, I would imagine.
And, you know, I think, and.
Good and valuable consideration.
Right, if it's in a permit as well, then, I mean, it's not something that we would be able to, to violate. But whatever mechanism the board feels it would give it, you know, proper assurance, I mean, we're not looking to change the zoning of that residential lot, so it's a, it's a legal residential lot. I mean, whether it's kept as it is, or it's developed as a home in the future, I, I don't know, but, you know, so I can give you that assurance.
So you're assuring us that you, your client would be willing to enter into such a covenant if this, if the zoning change went through? Correct?
If, if the zoning change were to go through, and we were able to get approval for our project, then we would have a covenant dented into.
As part of that project approval?
Correct.
Thank you, I just want to make sure I understood that. Okay, so, did you have anything else you wanted to add, Mr. Vaughn?
Yeah, I did, I, so, at, at the last meeting, and I appreciate the back and forth on that, I know there was, there's been a lot of focus on traffic, right, in terms of Cambridge Street, and I know the neighbors, some of whom are here today, have talked about that, and I just, you know, wanted to mention that, and I know we don't want to present our project tonight, I mean, and I, I respect that, but I do think it's important that, you know, from our perspective, and we've, we've gone through this before with Audi and Porsche, so we kind of know what the numbers are, we don't anticipate any meaningful increase in traffic as a result of, of this project. Generally speaking, an auto. Generally speaking, an auto dealership does not generate a lot of daily traffic. If you look at the Institute of Traffic Engineer numbers on a per-square-foot basis, certainly not as much as office or retail. The dealership is already there, it's existing. It's really just an opportunity for us to modernize the dealership, provide an enhanced experience for customers, and alleviate wait times for service appointments from its existing customer base. So, you know, there's a number of Kia dealerships that are in the, the eastern Mass trade area. It's not like this is the only Kia dealership, so you build a new dealership and all of a sudden people are gonna, you know, be coming to it. That, it's, it's really just to provide a, a more modernized facility for, for customers. So, and I think that would all be borne out ultimately in a traffic study that we'd have to share with the board as part of any permit. But what, what I really wanted to focus on is a, a byright building, if we were to just keep the Kia dealership and then take 95 and 97, which is where the quick copy and the Wolf Ham Best building down, and you tore those down and put up a new building, you know, and speaking with Chris, I mean, very comfortably, we feel that you could put a building of about 15, 16,000 square feet on that site. You know, it'd be a two-story building, about 75, 100 square foot footprint, could be parked, and, you know, that would be byright, whether it's a office or retail or some combination of the two. And it would generate significantly more traffic than what we're talking about with the, the dealership as, as redevelops, so.
So Mike, let me, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I don't want to lose the train of thought, that's why. I'm thinking a better way to do that, maybe. Would they be, would they be, if border inclined, would they be willing to give a strip of land to the town so they would never have the possibility of an access to it?
Are you going back to the first item?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Deed the piece of property over--
Deed a piece, or you're basically locking--
Not the entire--
Locking them out. No, just a strip so that they could never have access to--
They can't ever have access, though. It's not allowed through the bylaw for them to access--
Again, you were concerned, you were concerned--
My concern was that they could use it for some other purpose, not for access, but to expand their business into that lot. I couldn't hear what you said. Don't Ian.
Simply would, it would affect, it would, it would truly prevent them from ever accessing that neighborhood in the back. You know, by giving a strip of land that they don't own, so you can't, you don't have that.
I think the only problem with that, Joe, would be that it's, it's a residential lot, so if we were to develop it residentially, we'd need to be able to access the lot for a driveway for the, a home, right? So.
I mean, you could, you could grant it with a driveway. I mean, you could grant the strip with a driveway. In other words, it might be another option if you were concerned about rezoning problems and things like that.
Yes, I'm not concerned about--
Because you said you're only a town meeting away--
Right. I'm not concerned about them accessing through Arlington Road. I'm concerned, because I don't think the, the bylaw allows for that. I'm concerned that at some point in the future, the business may seek to expand into that area, not for purposes of access, but for other purposes.
Expand into that lot?
Yes, by rezoning it. So, for example, five years down the road--
They rezoned it from what?
The company comes back, they rezone, they ask town meeting to rezone it because they want to use it to park cars.
So to rezone it to, from residential to--
Yeah, to something else so that they can park cars there.
Right.
That's just an example. It could be anything. But I don't think, my main concern was not using Arlington Road as access, because I don't think they can do that.
Well, I think the biggest concern for the neigh, one of the concerns for the neighborhood was that they'll never have access--
Access, they can't. That's not allowed in our bylaw.
It isn't allowed in the bylaws.
I'd be comfortable exploring whatever option might be. I mean, we're, we're indicating, we have no intent of doing it, so we'll stand up behind it in terms of however we can appropriately paper and document that with the town, but--
You just used the word "today" though when you started off. You said, "We have no, we have no intention of doing that today." And I think that that's the problem.
Oh, well, I didn't, I didn't mean to say it.
Pretty poignant.
Yeah, well, I mean--
Today.
Okay, so I think we all, you, you understand our concern.
Yeah.
We understand that you're, you would like to reassure us that that will not happen, and we all have to live with this ambiguity. But is there anything else you wanted to bring forward?
No, I guess I, I was just wrapping up the theme on the traffic, is that, you know, to the, and, and look, we, we understand that traffic, pedestrian safety are all legitimate concerns for that Cambridge Street strip. I, I know traffic can be, you know, a bit difficult at times, and I guess my only point is that this proposal, in our opinion, and I think we can back it up with data as well, would generate significantly less traffic than what a byright reutilization of that property would be. Not, not to mention that we have an opportunity to really dress up the front appearance of it--
Not before us now.
Closed curb cuts, new sidewalk and all that stuff--
Not before us right now.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
It's hard to kind of stay right in the lane.
I know, it is, thank you.
All right, well, appreciate your time, so, thanks.
All right. I know that we have neighbors here who want to speak. I'm going to reiterate what I said at the beginning of the meeting, that everybody will be given three minutes to speak, but before I do that, I'm going to see if my fellow board members have any questions or comments. Anyone? No, this time. All right, so is there anyone here in the audience, either online or in this room, who would like to speak on this matter? Please identify yourself. Yes, please come forward. If you can have a seat here, if you could, we're gonna ask if you could move that microphone. Pull the microphone really close because they don't work all that well unless it's right next to your mouth.
Thank you.
Thank you, and please identify yourself for the record.
I'm gonna do this first, okay?
Sorry?
Good evening, my name is Sharon Laurie, 20 Arlington Road, Burlington. Madam Chairman and Board, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm gonna touch off on the thing I said last time. My favorite quote today is from Herb Chambers. "I no longer, it no longer meets the needs of our business or our customers," unquote. The Porsche and Audi dealership that is owned by Herb Chambers originally started out as just a place to store your cars. Now it's a huge auto dealership. When I was speaker of Mark, attorney Mark Vaughn, he stated that most of the construction would take place behind the abutter at 20 Arlington Road. Burlington High School is literally across the street. 16 Arlington Road, the discussion you just had, is owned by Herb Chambers. They cannot give you any, they, they're basically not going to donate the land to the town of Burlington. They're asked twice. Today, I hear that they're trying to make some waves, but that piece of land is critical. The high school students, the track team walks up and down, runs up and down that road. There's events, the Leahy 5K race takes place behind Arlington Road, Sunset and all those back roads there, along with the track meets take place there as well. The rezoning, today, you know, they don't, they're, they're telling you they're not going to do something today, but the problem is, we, we don't know what's gonna happen in two or three years. We don't know. Some of you may not be here, you may have a different thought process, but how do we keep our children safe? Route 3 is going down to one lane. It opens up at the high school. At the high school, it's gonna become two lanes. That's gonna cause havoc on the motorists and the pedestrians, and it's also gonna be a bike lane. Herb Chambers' peak hours on some days is 3:00 PM. The high school gets out at 3:00 PM. It's going to be a madhouse back there, and I urge you to really consider what's gonna happen to the people. And it's just not me, it's just not my neighbors. We're talking about an entire community that's gonna be caught up in madness. Herb Chambers is a billionaire. He can have his home anywhere he wants. He can put a Kia dealership anyplace that's non-residential. We're asking to keep our places safe. We can't afford to move and go here and there like they can, but we can sit here and fight and appeal to the entire board because we deserve and our peace. We're trying not to save ourselves, but we're truly trying to save the neighborhood and our community. So if you could find in your hearts to feel the same pain and anxiety that we have and vote no, it would be a blessing for all of us, and I thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Please come forward. Thank you. Take your time.
Just writing this in here, sorry. Millie Nash, town meeting member in precinct three, and I live on Sunset Drive, Arlington Road's very close by. And I, I think that the neighbors have stated very eloquently what they think, but I would like to do, well, I was going to do four things, but now I'm going to do two things. The first thing is to say that Joe and Pembud did the kind of thing just now that I love to see in this town, thinking creatively and saying, "Hey, isn't this one way to solve the problem?" And I think that's worth thinking about. I, I would like to say our problem is larger than the neighborhood, and that if we could solve the problem of traffic in Burlington, Herb Chambers would benefit by that as would the neighbors and would all of Burlington. I've been on a bike committee, I've been on the beeline committee, I've been on the sidewalk committee, and I chaired the traffic problem committee, and what we discovered was, this problem has been studied to a fairly well and nothing has ever happened. So I think we have to look at the bigger picture. And I think that while we're looking at the bigger picture, to do anything that increases the traffic we already have is, should not happen until we've solved the traffic problem because the master plan has, you know, said, "We need to do something," and a little history just might help. Back 30-plus years ago, when the beeline came in, ooh, the beeline, guess what? There was a traffic coordinator who ran the beeline, and there were three buses. And it didn't work badly until she retired, and then nobody took her place, and so it just fell to whoever was there, and little by little, it slipped. And the irony of when the town was less inhabited, we had a traffic coordinator, and now we have an economic person who's really good, Melissa was talking tonight. But if she had someone who could solve the traffic problem to help her, the town, including Herb Chambers, would be better. When you have a dealership that you can't take a left out of Arlington Road to go to many hours of the day, doesn't make sense. The town has gridlock, and that's a major problem. But in the area where this dealership is, there are two problems. One is Cambridge Street, and the other is one of the major gridlock problems in town, the schools. We have buses driving to and from schools, but the number of cars that go into all the schools is amazing. Until we get that kind of thing figured out, we could be saving money if we had someone organizing all of these things. And I guess what I'm saying, I hope you will think of the bigger picture, not just the neighbors, and to do as little as you can get away with until we solve the bigger problem, because I don't think most of us want to be known as an auto mile place. We're, we're much more responsible and attractive than that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Nash. I think there's a gentleman in the back who also wanted to speak. You can sit or stand as you prefer. Please state your name for the record, though.
Right, hello. I'm Brendan Lucas, and I am but the dealership in question on Arlington Road. I oppose the expansion and any possible rezoning of this property. As an engineer, I can tell that the explanations provided to us contain no reasonably discernible information. The building does not at all resemble the artist's rendition that was paid for by Herb Chambers. They have not transparently demonstrated their intentions towards the land, nor provided estimates of the environmental destruction involved. If they expand, they will likely damage wetlands and cut down trees in unnecessary ways in an area that already lacks appropriate protections for nature. I am a Burlington High School graduate, and anyone from my graduating class of 2018 would understand that this area of Cambridge Street is already too dangerous to walk across. Burlington does not need this additional difficulty. Now I'm a daily commuter to Burlington, or Boston, relying on public transportation, and I can confirm that Cambridge Street is already far too congested. The company's plans to build a few pieces of sidewalk do not begin to ameliorate the situation. If town meeting allows any rezoning or expansion here, they will lose our confidence. I think Joseph made a reasonable suggestion for Herb Chambers to give the plot to the town. Thank you.
Mr. Lucas, is there anyone else in, in the audience that would like to speak? Yes, please come forward. Okay, thank you.
I'm Mary Jean Lucas, and I live at 24 Arlington Road. I'm an abutter to the dealership property, and I continue to be concerned about the safety of our residential neighborhood. We already experienced heavy traffic congestion at the intersection of Arlington Road and Cambridge Street. Difficulty making a left turn onto Cambridge Street from early morning hours until mid-evening, most business days, and this can also include weekend days. We're concerned about increased traffic from the expanded dealership. Also, cut-through traffic through our neighborhood as a result of the traffic congestion. We have a very narrow street, Arlington Road. Two cars cannot pass at the same time. Delivery trucks have to back up the entire street. We have some spillover traffic at the school, drop-off and pickup for Burlington High School. We have no space for extra traffic in our neighborhood, and this does continue to be a concern. And this would be the only large dealership in Burlington that backs up to residential property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lucas. I see we have some people online who would like to speak. Ms. Mayo?
There should be requests on the middle of your screen to unmute now. I know she raised her hand a while ago, so I'm not sure. Oh, there we go.
Hi, I'm Sue Mayo, and I'm from 30 Arlington Road, and I don't want to repeat everything everybody else has said, but I will tell you that not only is it hard to turn, the school buses used to, before the Mercedes-Benz went into, into existence, there used to be a clock building, and that's what the school buses used to turn around that came down because they couldn't take the turn. You're adding in now tow trucks, car carriers, test drivers. May not be, you know, a lot of traffic per se, but it's the type of traffic you're adding that's gonna make a difference. And I know that they have stipulated that they won't have test drivers in our neighborhood. There's no way to police that. If I'm in a car and I want to drive it and I'm test-driving, and I can't, you know, I can't go up those streets, I think we're gonna have more problems there. I think right now you can't have your car carriers, so you bring them in from another site. I believe I've seen them come through our neighborhood several times as opposed to going on the main roads. Can I document that? No. I mean, do I have to be the police for it? No. So, along with all the concerns everybody stated, if you look on their own website, their peak traffic times are consistent with school hours. And if I was gonna drop my car off for service, I would be dropping it off right before work, and I would be picking it up right after work, and you're gonna have that funnel point there. You're just gonna make the traffic that much worse. So I'm totally against it, and also, when they say, "Well, this is just a little change, you've done it for the other places," this is the only dealership that abuts residents' properties. All the others-- All the others abut highways or other areas. There's no place for a dealership to be abutting. A residential area, and especially a high school one, where there's so much activity with the running and the walkers and people dropping their kids off on Arlington Road, there's a staircase that goes right to the high school. So I mean, people are up and down for that. You're just going to impact it. That's all. So I'd like to vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Mayo. Ms. Tentaklos.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. For the record, my name's Melissa Tentaklos, Economic Development Director for the town of Burlington. And, you know, I've been listening and understand, you know, I'm sensitive to a lot of the neighbors' concerns with regard to traffic, but I feel, you know, it's my obligation in my role to also point out that, you know, this amendment is for, you know, looking at the use and really trying to support, you know, an existing business currently in Burlington, a business that is trying to provide additional private investment, a multimillion-dollar investment in the community on a commercial tax basis. It's relevant for new growth and the continued kind of split that we've kind of enjoyed over the years. So I think that is something to take into consideration. And with regards to some of the traffic thing, issues that people brought up, you know, as many people know, there's been a 3A analysis for the resurfacing and better striping, biking. There's also been a lot of concern that, you know, addressing that will create more problems. There's a lot of tension between trying to go fast and also improving the roadway and installing better pedestrian connections across Cambridge Ave. So that, I feel, is a separate issue. It needs to be addressed, it needs to be worked on in an interdepartmental way through DPW, Economic Development Planning and Administration, and that needs attention. And, you know, I recognize Millie Nash was on here earlier, you know, it does need us to direct private investment as well as state and municipal investments, because those projects and the safety along 3A is not something just the town or just one company can address. It's a very much a required high-level attention and collaboration. And so I understand the safety and the concerns for that roadway, but it is more than stopping one, you know, one zoning effort for a business that wants to expand and locate here. And I believe with the site plan and the review by Planning Board, when a project is, you know, if this does pass at Town Meeting, and the project then comes to Planning Board, that is a time to have a Planning Board address more concerns and make sure that the curb cuts are safe, the sidewalks are designed better, so those things can be addressed at that time. So those were some of my comments today on this amendment. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Tentaklos. Ms. Ellis, did you have your hand raised? Thank you.
I did. Thank you. Sherri Ellis. I'll speak as zoning bylaw review committee chair again. Oh, I guess I should say not chair, but as a person on the ZBRC. Parking. I think Member Larue mentioned before about the residential lot behind that. Currently, there are cars parked on there, or have been recently, in the gravel area that's there, which is not allowed use. Yes, it may be grandfathered, but does not mean that it's a good thing to do. So in the sense of Town Meeting rezoning that property in the future, it's already been done. We've had it done in other areas of town. The Sullivan Funeral Home needed more parking, bought a residential lot, turned it into, I guess, a BG, and put a parking lot in. So it's not beyond the realm of possibility in the future that that could happen. The other thing that we did talk about at ZBRC, in the actual bylaw, the text of it, we did get the limitation of you can expand the use into another BG lot, but it can't expand the building more than 20,000 square feet. We also talked about and requested that perhaps putting a limitation on parking. So you could, there is no limitation currently, so you could continue to, in the future, build, buy additional BG lots and add more parking lots. So we had requested consideration of that. It didn't go anywhere. So I am concerned about parking, and into that residential lot is a consideration for the future. So as a Town Meeting member also, I would look for some kind of agreement, not when it comes before the Planning Board, but before it comes to some kind of memorandum or whatever you would call it, to that degree that, you know, if this passes, then we'll get a real agreement for nothing in that residential lot. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ellis. I do not see any other hands raised. I'll give you a last moment, and then I'm going to once again ask my fellow board members if anyone has any questions or comments before we take a vote. Seeing none?
Madam Chair, may I have a motion to close the public hearing on this matter?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Seven, zero. You have to choose.
Yeah, I know. I have.
You want me to read it?
Please do, Ernie.
Oh, never mind, he can't actually see it well enough to read it.
I'll let you choose, Ernie.
Say again?
I said, I'll let you choose.
Okay. This one right here, right? Okay, I'll make a motion to recommend favorably on the petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article 4, Use Regulations, Section 4.2.0.
Zero.
Zero, thank you. Principal Use Regul-- I did forget my reading glasses tonight, by the way. Principal Use Regulation Schedule by Adding a New Section 4.2.5.11 Related to Automobile Dealership Use and New Section 4.2.5.11 To be permitted by special permit in the General Business District, by right in the Water Resource District, and otherwise prohibited in all other districts submitted by Herb Chambers, 93 Cambridge Street, LLC.
Do I have a second? Anyone?
What did you say?
I'm looking, I'm asking if anyone wants to second the motion to recommend favorably. Anyone?
Um, no.
You will second it?
Second.
Okay. Seconded by Tony N. All those in favor?
Can we, discussion on the--
Of course.
--motion? I am going to vote favorably.
Okay.
And the reason I am going to vote favorably is because I do not think this use is going away.
Okay.
Passon Weiss was there when I moved into town. They operated a cramped crummy dealership out of the space, but they kept operating. Herb Chambers bought the dealership, and that's how they ended up with their portion Audi dealerships down the street. And since it was an existing dealership, they turned it into a Kia dealership. They aren't going away. They're just going to keep operating the way they're operating now if this is refused at Town Meeting. I would rather be able to see them come back here and be under our site plan rules and regulations and get something that looks a lot better. I agree, it's going to be bigger, has some defined curb cuts, so you know where people are going to be entering Cambridge Street and leaving Cambridge Street, and we'll be able to put some restrictions in there. The applicant has said he, they would agree, if they get a permit from this board, to put zoning, to covenants on the deed, so that the parcel could never be rezoned from residential. Covenants on the deed to run, as Joe says, with the property. So that Town Meeting couldn't change that.
Okay.
I just wanted to--
State your reasons.
State my reasons.
I understand.
Thank you.
Does anyone else want to comment before we vote?
Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick guide. I just want to make, you know, it clear that everyone understands, this is a rezoning, so there's nothing by right. There's no repercussions to voting for, against, or whatever with this, and, you know. Basically, what I've tried to do, from the time I've held public office in town, I've tried to put myself into the shoes of abutters and said, if I owned a home, and that's where my home was, and that's where I was bringing my family up, would I want the project to come here? And I think the point has been made a few times by some of the neighbors, is this is the only place in town that we have that type of business, literally abutting residential neighborhood.
But in the same respect, that use has been there for so long.
It absolutely has.
And I'm with you, and that's why I, it's hard.
It's been there for a long time. There's a lot of good pluses. There's a lot of pluses. There could be a lot of pluses to it. The reality is, we're allowing an expansion of a use that's been there for a long time, so--
And it's the same, again, as an abut, I would understand, and I feel, but in the same vein, it's, you know, it's like the person who buys a property on Cambridge Street and complains about the traffic. You bought a house on Cambridge Street, you bought a house abutting commercial land, you knew what you were purchasing.
Well, it's maybe the equivalent of buying a house on Cambridge Street, and it turns into 128.
Right. Again, that's why it's very difficult, you know?
So you, you know, again, you've got a use that's been there, but the question here is, do we allow an expansion of that use, really, in, you know, in an area that literally abuts residential houses? That's what I think it really comes down to. And we can make arguments until, you know, until it gets light out in the morning here, but the reality is, will there be some pluses? Sure, there could be some pluses. Ernie had said, you know, it might give us the ability to do certain things that we'd like to do on that site. The reality is, I have to make my decision based on if my home were behind there, would I want to see that? And that's how I--
Okay.
You know, and you can make it in this case, because it's a zoning change. It's nothing, there's nothing that I could, you know, vote against it, because I didn't like the color of the cars they were selling there. You know, in other words, it's a zoning change. So that's what we need to understand.
Okay. So we have a motion before us. It has been moved and seconded. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained? One. Okay, so we have two in favor, three against, one abstention. Am I correct? Two, three, one is the vote.
Two, four, one?
Oh, sorry. One, two, two, four, one. Sorry. I can add. Two, four, one. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll see you at Town Meeting.
Thanks.
Okay. Now, we are going back to item E. Is that correct?
Good as mine, Barbara.
Oh, yeah, I'm up next.
I think we're on item E. Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take item E out of order.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Item E. Item 7E, is a Continued Public Hearing Petition to Amend the Zoning Bylaws by Updating and Modernizing Article 2 Definitions and Article 4, Section 4.2.0, Principal Use Regulation Schedule submitted by the Planning Board. Liz, I believe you're presenting this item.
I am representing this item. I want to make sure that Caleb, I need to be able to talk, and he needs to be able to run the computer--
I understand.
This would be this one, 237.
Take your time to get it set up.
And we're going to go by date mode. We love that for us.
This one?
Oh, yeah, that one, and then the table.
Oh, this one.
Let me pull those both up.
You got this.
With WebEx's update, I'll have to stop sharing my screen, dig open between the Word document, the Excel sheet.
So everybody has these in front of them, and Ms. Ellis, if you want a copy of what we have for--
Plenty of other copies up there. You want to sit over there?
Yeah, if you want to--
We printed them out.
If you want to, I did 15, knowing you'd be here, and I didn't know--
Share and share a lot.
I just want to make sure before you get into it.
Yeah, we're going to get into it, all right.
Would you rather we have the Word doc or the table first?
I think the Word doc.
We'll start there.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. So I've been working furiously on this for the past three days, I would say. And so I have taken a lot of the ZBRC's comments into account, and they had some really, really helpful updates and things, such as, you know, instead of, you know, starting, you know, for single-family houses, it's dwelling units, and putting things in order and making more sense of things. There were some, there were some definitions that were in the use table, that some of the highlighted definitions in the use table were not defined previously, and so I have defined them. So, you know, hardware store, we'll talk about that. I know that that was one of the things. So we all want a hardware store in town, but we don't necessarily want a big-box retail hardware store in town. So as part of my definition, I cap that at 30,000 square feet, so you're not going to be getting a Lowe's or a Home Depot in town. You know, let's see, what else? Shared, well, these are all things that were already in the definitions, shared creative space. One of the questions we had, I had from the ZBRC was home occupations, one and two. People seemed, there's some confusion there. So that would be on page six, for those of you following along, 4313 and 4314, just for the record. So home occupation one is an SP, because it's a home occupation where you will be having customers come to your house. So it's a home occupation, you're a dentist, you're an optometrist, people will be coming to your house. It's a special permit, because we want your neighbors to know that this business is going to be there. They should have a say. If you are, you know, somebody that is doing quilting in your house, and, you know, and you're not going to be, you're not going to be, you know, having people come to your house, it's a yes in RO, right? So things like that. What are the other things that I had to define that I haven't so far? And, let's see, so I, food hall, public market, at the bottom, we go to page nine. Food hall, public market, and mobile food court, vendor court, I define those. So the food hall, public market, indoor, so I think about the Boston Public Market, the vendors inside, and then mobile food market, I think of farmer's markets. Added a definition for cartlet, outdoor display of merchandise. What else are some highlights in here? A lot of help from, from ZBRC, keeping me in line, and I really appreciate it. But again, you know, what I've asked members of boards and committees, you know, are there any issues with kind of yes-no special permit in the use table for these items? That really hasn't changed, except for the new definition, so as long as you guys are comfortable with that. It's just kind of, we're trying to, we're trying to update it, modernize it.
And make it easier to read.
Yeah. And again, nothing is static here, so--
Okay.
Any questions you guys have?
Yeah, again, I really want to commend our staff, because it's been a long time since we've made these kinds of updates to our bylaw, and it's very easy to push these things aside, because we're always dealing with the applicants that are right in front of us. So I'm really happy that the director has taken these on. I think, and I know you intend to continue, maybe not at this level, but, so I thank you for that. I do not have any questions. I've been going over it multiple times, so I'm good. I already asked all my questions. Are there any other board members who have questions?
Yes, Joe.
Oh, no, no, I was just, go ahead.
So I, the hardware store, I know everybody wants a hardware store. Question I have is, what can we, can we make, can we picture in our minds 30,000 square feet? I want to figure out what, what around here is 30,000 square feet, and I, you know, and then maybe look at the Ace Hardware Store in Woburn, or some of the other hardware stores that are standalone, and what's the square footage of those?
So this is exactly the thought process that went through my head when I was trying to, when I was coming up with 20,000 or 30,000 square feet. This definition that I have actually came from the Planner's Dictionary. It's on the American Planning Association website, and so it basically is a compendium of what different, across the country, what different cities and towns have for their definitions. And 30,000 was one that was in there. I've done kind of my own research in saying, you know, what is the average size of an Ace Hardware? It is, you know, 20, 25,000, you know, so that's, you know--
I'm thinking 30 is big, because I know, as much as I'd want a hardware store, and I would love O'Connor in Burlington, but not in the center of town. Like, in other words, you know what I'm saying? I may want a hardware store in the center of town, but more like an Ace Hardware. you know what I'm saying? I may want a hardware store in the center of town, but more like an Ace Hardware.
What is the building, to help me visualize, what is the size, let's say, what is the size of the auto parts building that is, we're waiting to come in on the corner of Cambridge Street?
207 Cambridge.
I'll look at the site plan to see what's.
I'm just curious. Is it, that's big, right?
Yeah.
Even just the, just the auto parts store.
Why don't you say CVS? Like, that's a big.
How big is CVS? That's a nice example.
I'm just saying, is that about?
I don't know.
I'm looking at the site plan. I can share that it looks like O'Reilly Auto Parts is approximately 11,000 square feet.
Wow.
But that's.
What is CVS at 242 Cambridge Street?
242.
242.
I also think about, like, next to Shaw, so what, like, the dollar store.
The bookstore.
Dollar store is even smaller than.
That's way smaller. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, dollar stores are very small.
Are we looking to minimize the 30,000? Want to go 20,000?
CVS is probably bigger than.
You're not talking, are you talking, is that footprint or is that total square footage? Including the basement or, you know, I don't, what is the other thing on that? You know what I mean?
Usable.
Because footprint is a little different than square footage, because, you know, you can store a lot of things in a basement of that, and you can have a 10,000, which is really 20, you know.
We're saying usable?
It's gross floor area in that definition, so 30,000 or fewer square feet gross floor area.
So, maybe we look at two measurements, a footprint and a gross square footage, which, you know, I wouldn't mind it being a second floor and a basement, having additional stuff going. I just wouldn't want to have 30,000.
So, should we say 30,000 square feet or whatever number of retail area? Do we want to say a facility of 30,000 square feet of retail area? Would that solve the problem?
Or maybe less than 30 if it's retail. Yeah, I would say 15,000 of retail, because then that's not, retail isn't including the basement as storage.
Right.
And then limit the footprint.
Correct. So, you, no greater than 15,000 usable square feet.
Do we need to limit the footprint, though, if we keep the retail space to 15,000?
Did we ever find CVS or not?
I was just about to say, I didn't want to interrupt, that off of the property record card for CVS, the square footage is 13 and a half thousand square feet.
So, that's about.
And that's the footprint.
That's, yep, that's the finished area square footage.
That's the one level, 15.
Right, so I think we say 15,000.
Usable retail, usable is the actual term. It's usable.
How do you define retail, usable retail? Because if I think about.
When you say, in commercial real estate, when you're saying usable, it's what you're actually using for the retail area, not storage space.
But I may also want to limit the footprint, because I wouldn't want to necessarily see a 15,000 square foot footprint, you know, because that would be bigger than CVS.
Slightly, yeah. That would be bigger, yeah. See, I wouldn't have a problem with that, but maybe some people would.
Right, right, that's, yeah.
I don't know how far we can go in just a definition. I gave it, I threw it at the wall.
Right.
Because with a hardware store, you're more likely to have.
Storage area.
Non-retail, unusable retail space, whether it's like mixing paints or storage.
Yeah.
The other.
Why don't you drop the 30 to 20?
I would go even lower.
I'd drop it to 15.
I would go lower, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, which is, yeah, which is what Brenda said, 15, right? But, so, the question is, do we, and there's nothing to say you can't have retail on a lower, on a basement level either. Nothing says you can't sell on a basement level. Plenty of places do that, too, so, I don't know. I think, before I said yes to the whole thing, I'd like to kind of maybe think about that and see what, if there's something that.
I feel comfortable with 15,000 square feet.
I do.
The other thing.
Would you say 15 or 15?
15.
15. I was going to go home.
One five.
So, I want to just put on my economic development hat. Sorry, Melissa. So, one of the reasons why I think it's hard for businesses like this to come in is because the margins are extremely thin, right? So, I understand your fear, and, you know, that we don't want a big box in here, but at the same time, if we, I'm concerned that if we do make it more restrictive, we won't be able to get any.
Well, hardware store in particular, not only are the margins thin, but they need to have so many items.
Exactly.
They need so many different.
Here's a question. Caleb, can you work a little magic there on your computer again and tell us what the square footage is of O'Connor Hardware in Billerica on?
Well, that's you.
It's, I know, but I want to know for comparison. Is it?
That's pretty, I think, bigger than.
Probably 35, 30.
I bet you that that is bigger than CVS.
Then I don't want 30, if it's 35.
I would look in their property record. I would look in their assessors. I don't know.
Okay, if it's too difficult to find because it's not here and we don't have the, is it because we don't have the address?
I don't have the property record cards of Billerica.
Okay, okay.
But, so, again.
I'm comfortable with 15.
And again, this is.
Which is not, that's bigger than your average Ace Hardware. It's a little bit bigger than our CVS. It's actually kind of generous.
Yeah, if we're talking CVS, I think 15 is good.
That's a good-sized hardware store.
Change it to 15, you got my vote.
I just did.
Are you?
I think I'm okay with 15.
If it's in the town center, there's design review, Joe.
That's true.
Right.
If it's in the town center, there's design review, Joe.
Yep.
That's true. Okay. Any other questions from the board on this matter?
No, we have, this is particularly in the town center. It's particular to a hardware store. It's not particular to any, because we already have restrictions.
Well, we, this is, we're just talking, we're talking about a whole big thing here, and this is just one line.
No, I know, but in the downtown, we have size restrictions already for the storefronts, right? I think it was, isn't it 10,000? Or what, don't we already have restrictions on the size? Or we do?
On the size of.
On the size of a storefront, in particular, any.
CVS apparently has 13, so.
Well, that was pre-overlay. CVS was pre-overlay.
Okay.
Not that I know of in the design rules and regs.
I think we did. I think we had 10,000.
I'm looking up O'Connor Hardware. I just want to let you know, this comes from CommercialCafe.com, so it looks legit, but I can't completely verify this, but this puts it as 84,000.
Oh, wow.
Uh, square foot, square feet.
Is that a single?
Is that up and down?
Which one?
Again, I, and this is just, all it's telling me is property size, so that might just be the entire parcel. I don't know this area, so.
It could include their warehouse area.
Strip.
The whole strip.
Strip, it's called.
Could be the whole strip.
So, that's where that number comes from, apologies.
Thank you.
That's huge.
I think we're good with this, Jim.
I know, I know. I hear there's popcorn.
Yeah, we are, we like 15. Let's go with 15.
Okay.
I mean, if you're going to go bigger, why wouldn't you go to Home Depot? You know what I'm saying? If you're going to go, if you're going to go really big.
Okay, so, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wants to speak on this matter? Okay. Are we ready to vote?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion and close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend favorably on the petition to amend the zoning bylaws by updating and modernizing Article Two definitions, Article Four, Section 4.2.0, principal use regulation schedules submitted by the planning board as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven, zero. Okay. Next up is item F. Item F is a public hearing petition to amend and update Article Eight, Section 8.4.0, wireless communication facilities of the Burlington zoning bylaw submitted by the planning board. Liz.
So, I've been, myself and Barbara, and I know that Brenda's been involved in trying to, you know, work this out. My goal as the planning director is always to, you know, keep the town out of, is to keep the town, you know, free of any type of lawsuits that could come. I think that this bylaw is a good start, from what I understand, but there's more that can be done, and it could be vetted a little bit more. And so, you know, I'm open to whatever you guys want to do. My impetus in putting it together was just that, so, but I think, you know, I'm open to whatever you guys decide on this one.
So, for my fellow board members, normally I open it up to everybody, but I'm going to ask Brenda to take first stab at this because she has a lot more experience, and we had a good conversation today about some of her concerns. I'd like to let her go first. Brenda, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this is a good start. I think, knowing how busy we are, I think this is a Band-Aid fix. I think if you take a look at the history of wireless, it's, you know, basically a 25-year young industry that has evolutionaryized quite a bit. I mean, if we go back to the origination, there was a bad phone, you basically had to hop on one foot, hold your hand up in the air, and maybe it was going to work. And now, you know, you see where cellphones are, and it's a far cry. Some of the language in here, talking in the proposed amendment, talks about like-for-like equipment. From a carrier's perspective, they could come at us and say, this is a three-foot black antenna, and we're just going to put another three-foot black antenna, and it's like-for-like, but we don't really know the technology. My concern is if we approve this, that it's not going to be addressed again. And I think that, I think that we should hire a consultant to get, to take a deeper dive. And I think that, I'm not concerned about wireless carriers coming after us at this point in time. I think that if we get a consultant in here and really work with us on this amendment and take a look at what other states and what other communities are doing to protect the community, the financial aspect, and, you know, money that the community could receive from these carriers, is a lot more beneficial than approving this amendment as stated. So.
Okay. If anyone has any questions regarding that, by all means. Thank you, Brenda. Ernie?
Question for Brenda. Do you think what we have in place now, do you think this is a stopgap measure anyways?
I think that if we approve this, it's going to be a Band-Aid fix, and it's going to get lost in the shuffle with the amount of work that we have ahead of us. In addition, how do you go backwards when we're approving things that don't necessarily make sense? I think we should be hiring a consultant. I think that we should really take a deeper dive and look at what other communities are doing.
So, the answer to my question, my question is, is this better than what we have?
No.
Okay, that's my one.
I think this provides, if I, as I understand it, provides companies with the ability to do things without coming to the board where they currently have to come to the board. So, it gives us less control, which, you know, according to federal law, they think we should have less control, but we're not sure we are ready to give that up, or at least we want to make sure we do it the right way. I am in favor of Brenda's suggestion to hire a consultant because I do not understand this industry, and I want to make sure that whoever's helping staff craft this has a better understanding of it than I certainly have. And so, that's what I would like to see happen, but I'd like to hear from the rest of the board.
I'm willing to follow Brenda's recommendation because she is the expert in this area.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, nobody could hear you, except us.
I'm willing to follow Brenda's recommendation because I feel she's the expert in this area.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, then I'm going to ask the board.
Can we withdraw it without prejudice?
We can withdraw it without prejudice, but I also want the board to take a vote tonight to ask, to instruct staff to begin the process of looking into hiring a consultant.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to hire a consultant on behalf of this article to move forward.
Second. All those in favor of instructing staff to hire a consultant for this matter?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven, zero. Okay.
So, are we instructing them to hire them, or just, or look into what the cost and everything is going to be? What we're going to get for scope and?
Well, she's going to, exactly. She'll, yeah, she's not going to go and hire it without talking to us.
And bring back your findings, and we can make a decision based.
So, before we vote on this, this is a public hearing. If we're going to, if we're withdrawing it, do we need to?
No, we're withdrawing it.
Okay, all right. So, I am ready to entertain a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
So, moved, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven, zero. Okay. All right, so that was item F. Moving on to item G. Item G is a continued public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaws, Article Two definitions and Article Five dimensional requirements as they pertain to accessory use regulations related to the RO, one-family dwelling district submitted by the zoning bylaw review committee. Ms. Ellis, welcome. I'm sorry you had to wait so long.
Quite all right. I was entertained with the rest of the articles as well.
Take it away.
Can I ask a quick question first, procedurally wise? I don't know if we got the answer to this. Depending on how the articles go forward at town meeting, we have fitness center in the definition use table that you just did, and then there will be amendments to that. So, do we know which order these are going to be in, so we're not?
So, I did ask this of town council, and she informed me that it doesn't matter and that they will all, that all of the changes will be, it actually doesn't matter that the bylaw. It'll all be entered.
The attorney general will approve them, and then town clerk will just kind of.
Well, I, no, no, I.
You will put them in? Okay. I was just curious.
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you for that little digression there. Okay, so if I can take a minute and step back just to give an overview again so that we're all on the same page, the reason this came forward is because there are concerns about what needs a permit for accessory uses, and this is really specifically for residential uses. What needs a permit, what doesn't need a permit? It's not clear in the bylaws, so therefore, it's left to interpretation of the building inspector. And so, there's two kind of parts to this, is that we need to clarify the regulation table, and then we also need to better define some of the definitions that are used to define some of those things. So, that's kind of where this was. We left off, we had had, I think people were fine with most of the definitions. We left off with a very confusing, because we were in process of a structure definition. So, I submitted to Liz this afternoon. I hope.
Caleb has it up.
I'll print it out here. And so, we also had a conversation with town council this afternoon, and so we've come up with a very similar definition, but a little simpler for structure, which is anything constructed or erected and installed in or on the land. And so, with that, we then can go to the regulation table.
Actually, before you move to the regulation table, we also changed the definition of building.
Correct, okay. So, as Barbara very aptly put, a building is a structure, but a structure not necessarily is a building.
All buildings are structures, not all structures are buildings.
Correct. So, we did, to clarify building, we did add in that it was a structure.
Madam Chair, can you expand? Can you talk about building height, or do you want to wait to go to the table? Just the language on building height.
Do you mind if we do the language of building height before we move on to the table?
I know you had a question before about the, let's include the extras, the antennas and all of that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, is there any maximum height on spires and cupolas and antennas, or is it just unlimited?
Did you have?
Like a giant spire.
Yeah, because you're saying the building height is, these are not included in the building height, so how high can they go, I guess, is my question.
Through the building inspector, I don't believe that there is any kind of height because it's all in that mechanical area above the building.
Well, any type of antenna should be stealthed anyways.
I think there's a maximum antenna height.
I'm pretty sure there is, but those should be stealthed anyway, so if the structure itself.
Not even cell antennas. Somebody's putting a ham antenna on it.
A ham antenna, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, and if there's a spire there, how high does the spire go? If somebody wants to put one on top of a, you know, a new McMansion, you know, is that unlimited? You know, I mean, I remember my kids going to preschool in Lexington, and how many kids, talked about living in castles, and I think half the class said they lived in castles. And you look at the houses, they had spires and all sorts of crazy stuff. So, I think it's there. I mean, if we, if you strike that last sentence, what does that hurt us by not putting that in? I mean, can you have the stuff that you're talking about, be that building height to include an antenna or a cupola or a spire? Is the height too short for that to include those? I just kind of think back to where we had Mitt Romney, and if you go down Route Two, you know, you see the Gabriel on top of the Mormon, right? There was a big Board of Appeals issue going on years ago. But it goes, it just went, you know, it was unlimited, so that's just where I thought back to that.
So.
This is state building.
We have our own, as far as like kublas and stuff are concerned, I know we have height in the, in the use table for antenna, there are restrictions there.
As I understand what you're trying to achieve, I'm worried that if we just take the sentence out, we actually are not achieving what you're trying to achieve, so maybe what we need to do is add something to this, not included ours, spires, kublas, blah, 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 that do not include potentially habitable floor space as long as that, as long as they do not exceed X height, whatever that height should be. I mean, I don't know what that number should be.
Are X height above?
The structure.
The structure, something like that.
Yeah. No more than X number of feet above the structure. 10 feet, 6 feet, I don't know.
So, one, just cross-reference, so in the use table, which you guys all have in front of you, 43114 is the use table for towers, antennas, windmills, and similar structures. So, if you go in there, towers, windmills, and similar structures that don't exceed 12 feet in height measured from the ground are a yes in the RO District. If they do exceed 12 feet from the ground, it is, you know, you know, they do, there are, there are some restrictions in there.
Did you say that number would be 4.3 point what?
So, you need to look in the red, you need to look on the red side, and it's 43114.
43114. Thank you.
On the red side.
Thank you. Kublas and spires, we're talking like windmills?
Well, the antennas, it says cannot exceed 12 feet.
Towers and windmills, thank you.
12, 12.
It's up on the screen now.
I don't know why it printed so badly on here.
There you go. And you're looking for RO, so that's what this is.
So, basically, what we're saying is it can't be 12 feet above the roof of the building. 12 feet's a lot.
12 feet above the peak?
But then it's towers, windmills, as measured from the ground.
Yeah, this is measured.
But then above it, it says 12 feet above the roof.
Right.
So, is it measured from the ground, or is it measured from the roof?
As I say, just maybe from a language standpoint, if we have spires and kublas here and antennas, can we put in spires and kublas in here, just to be consistent?
Yes. And I want to talk about whether the 12 feet is from the roof or from the ground.
So.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, that come?
It says above the roof.
So, that comes to the question about, it's a processing question, which I don't like. So, I don't, so, so, Sheri, I don't know what you advertised your amendment as. Did you, you didn't advertise that you were making any changes for Section Four.
Section Four is the use table. Correct.
So, as part of what was advertised in the public hearing?
Gotcha.
We cannot, we cannot amend the use table because it's beyond what the public was advertised?
Can we then instruct staff that we want to address this starting at our January, February meeting so that we can fix it in May?
I see no reason why we could not.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, let's just make sure we don't forget that, because it's a little confusing here because in one place it does say 12 feet above the roof, and in another place it says 12 feet measured from the ground, towers and windmills, antennas and other things, 12 feet from the building. I think we need to work on that, but we can, can't do it now, we can do it for May, correct?
I think so. I think it's definitely doable, and like, it's, process issues are the worst.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Makes sense.
Great. Thank you.
All right.
So, I guess I'm just looking at this one particular dimensional, it says in ROs, the 5.1, 5.1.3.1 RO District, no accessory use or structure show occupied part of the required front or side yard, not more than 20% of the rear yard, other than required off-street pocket.
Where are you reading from?
Last one.
Okay, right here. Okay. All right.
Moved on from definition.
Yeah, I thought about that section too, because by this definition, a structure could be a trampoline, a swing set.
Swing set, yeah.
Could be.
It means you can't, yeah.
And you have to have that required setback or space.
Yes. What it's saying is, you can't put your swing set in your setback right next to your neighbor's property. You can have your swing set, you just have to keep it 15 feet away from your neighbor's property. I think, am I correct in understanding that?
Correct. And the point of this, this is what the point was, is then with the dimensional table, regulation table, it is not to limit anything, you can have any of this stuff, but it is, if it's greater than 65 square feet or taller than 10 feet, it requires a permit.
So, if you have a normal-sized swing set?
That way, the permit then will get to the building department, and they will figure out if it's in the setback.
How do you measure, how would you measure, like, a swing set in square footage? Like, how would you do that?
The outline of the?
So, would it, the furthest point to every side, and then you'd take that and?
I mean, again, this, you're not going to, every single structure, the point of the 65 square feet that we determined was doghouses, the smaller, the structures you're going to build around your trash barrels.
Even a small shed.
And a, you know. And the point of the 10 feet was that, you know, if you require it as 65 square feet, but accessory use can go up to 20 feet, so you could build, who would do that, but somebody could build a 65 square foot that's 20 feet tall, right on your property line. So, that's where the height came into this. And we're not telling anybody you can't do it, it's just so that it pulls it away from the setbacks and away from directly on the, of Butter Street line.
Which actually, with this, curious, with this, remember a couple of years ago, there was a neighbor that came before us, they ended up not proceeding, but they wanted to do a land-mounted solar thing, and they wanted to put it right at the back edge of their property.
Migrant Street.
Actually, I was thinking of September Lane.
Oh, September Lane.
But in any case, they, they went away, they didn't proceed, but would this, this would be a structure, so it would have to be pulled back from the setback, right?
Doesn't solar have its own?
Well, solar, solar's not allowed in the side or front.
Right. Correct.
But even, even.
Solar has its own.
It was in the, if it's the side or backyard, I'm sort of thinking maybe this would help with that, in that they have to, they can't put it right next to the neighbor's property, they have to pull it in from their setback.
Yeah. I mean, but, yeah. I mean, I guess the whole point with the solar was if you can see it, like, I think that's why we had designated the backyard as the area where they, and they were saying that.
Right.
Work in their backyard, the people on.
Right. But then, but then there's like September Lane, the back of your yard is somebody else's back of your yard.
That's right.
So, if you, I think, this is, I'm just saying, I think this would be a benefit because it's requiring people to pull it in.
Well, I mean, the problem is solar, you'd never get solar 65 feet, you know, 10 feet, you know, it's highly unlikely it would be 10. Unlikely, but you could. I mean, it's unlikely could be, it would be 10, but it, but you definitely wouldn't get the 65.
Unless somebody was building a little solar farm.
And you could do it in lower than 10 as well.
Yeah.
I just like, I'm thinking about like my own personal yard with the swing set, and I have trampoline, and I have both, I have really weird line, like, our land is very strange, and we're on conservation land, and, and because we have a stream behind us, the backyard purposely slopes down, so the water, like, continues going in there, so I only have one part of my yard that is flat enough for us to have the swing set, and my trampoline is right up against my fence, and my fence is right on my property.
Yeah, but the trampoline's not 65 square feet.
I wouldn't think so.
No, but.
That would be a huge trampoline.
Yeah, I was going to say.
It's not 10 feet high.
Uh, well, I have the net.
The net.
And my swing set is taller than my trampoline, so I struggle with this one, with the swing set and the trampoline.
So, the next question, because you just made me think of something, can you put 10 that are 60 square feet?
Say that again?
Can you put 10 structures that are 60 square feet?
Yeah, there's always the go-around, and, and to your point, Jessica, again, if it really became an issue, anything that's obviously in existence is grandfathered into this because we do have the issue that people have sheds, and we're not going to go through that. But then there also is the appeal process, and if you have, you know, topography that you can't put it anywhere else.
You go to the zoning Board of Appeals.
Because it's a dimensional requirement, they can grant it.
And, yes, and then to that, to Ernie's point, there's the dimensional.
Pretty darn big swing set if it's 65 square feet.
No, but it's tall. I think it's taller than 10 feet. Minus.
Okay, so it's the height that you worry about, not the square footage?
Height for a swing set. Jesus. I think any, if you have a, if you have.
Yeah, the thing at the top of this.
You have a slide, and then you have a.
The clubhouse. That's where that stemmed from, is that there is a property that I know that the swing set is on the property line, and the way the houses are set, someone's looking out the front yard, and this clubhouse is right on the property line of the other person. So, their view of their world is blocked by this clubhouse, or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's the kind of thing that, again, people's lots are in different things, so keeping it lower at the property lines and, you know, increasing it as you go in was the rationale behind that. Again, there's always the appeal process, if that's the only spot on the land.
Yeah, you could actually flip things so that your fort part is closer to your house, and your swing that's lower is closer to your neighbor, or something like that.
Sally Willard has been unmuted. If you, I know you have your hand raised.
Sally, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sally Willard, Town Meeting Member, Member of the ZBRC. One of the things that we discussed last night was the square footage. Now, if you know geometry, you know that you can measure anything, measure the area of anything that's bounded, so whether it's a circle, or an octagon, or a square. We started out with 80 square feet, which would be a 10 by, 8 by 10 foot shed. Now, an 8 by 10 foot shed is fairly substantial, and someone said, "Well, it should only be 50 square feet." So, we compromised at 65, which is 1 square foot more than an 8 by 8 shed. And Mark Dupell said that the roof that you would need for that shed would be 10 feet. To the top of the roof, and therefore, that's, we put the 10 feet in. So, 65 square feet and a 10-foot roof. Because 65, an 8 by 8 shed should give you enough space to put your lawnmower and your snow blower, as well as if you have a raised bed, which more people do today, or an elevated bed, I forget which one stands on legs and you move it, that, you could also fit in there, and in all likelihood, you know, some garden tools. So, you know, it was a practical, it, we discussed it, and it appeared to be a practical number to use. That's all.
Thank you. I feel ignorant in that I never knew I was supposed to be moving my elevated garden bed into the shed every winter, it's been sitting outside this whole time. Okay.
Learn something new every day.
There you go. Okay. Any other questions on this? And where do we, so what do we want to do with?
Was there something on the table?
Oh, yes, we were supposed to go on to the table. Thank you. Sheri, I asked you to stop.
We were talking with the table because that's not printed.
Oh, no, not the use table, but the dimensional table we can talk about.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was, there was there?
We stopped you from moving on to your table.
Oh, no, that's where we went to the 65. So, basically, anything greater than the 65 and the 10 feet, you will need a permit.
So, are we ready to vote, or do we need further discussion?
Anything greater than both of them, or anything greater than?
It's or.
Right, so it's, right, so that's, I thought you said.
It's 65 feet or 10 feet.
There's no and/or there, it's just or. I won't use an and/or.
Right.
Okay.
If anybody knows me.
Is there anyone else online who would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, are we ready to vote?
Madam Chair, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Change?
To a date, to the January 4th meeting, or do you want?
I thought we were voting.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
We just closed the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend the zoning bylaws, Article Two definitions and Article Four, Article Five dimensional requirements as they pertain to accessory use regulations relating to the RO One Family Dwelling District as amended. Again? Mr. Mr. Merriman? It's a double print, so there's no actual.
Yep, that was mistaken.
I just created that motion, Joe.
Oh.
Because it's a double.
It was the wireless one, actually.
Yeah, this type.
Do I have a second?
So, we're on?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, as printed.
We are on G, though, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all this work, Sheri. It's been a lot, I know, but we appreciate it.
The thanks are back to you again.
Okay. So, those are all of our items on our agenda. We're moving on, we don't have any minutes. We do have some discussion matters. I did want to share with the board, I went to the first Police Station Building Committee meeting today. It was mainly an introductory meeting. Not a lot was discussed in terms of the actual building. There were discussions regarding, some discussion regarding the process that the town went through regarding the feasibility study. I expressed that I was disappointed that the feasibility study was so narrow, and I would have liked to see it investigate other possibilities. I also brought up, as we had some discussion amongst ourselves, the desire on my part for the town to investigate the possibility of a public safety building that would incorporate both fire and police. I don't want to say I was dismissed, but I will think it's fair to say I was ignored. I think the, the town is pretty determined to move forward with the plan that they have. We also spent a great deal of time talking about funding for this project, although that was probably outside of the purview of that particular committee. We spent a lot of time talking about whether it should be funded through a debt exclusion vote or through the regular town operating budget. And it was apparent to me that it is the position of town administration at this time that they would like to go to a debt exclusion vote, that has not been resolved, to my What else? I mean, there was a lot of discussion about the current state of the building, but I don't think I need to go through that with any of you, you all know that. I think it's clear that everyone supports the need for a new police station. The question is, are we doing the best thing or the most expedient thing? And I did raise that issue, and I think I was the only one in the room who really thought that there needed to be further investigation of that. So, I'm just sharing that with this group. All of the Police Station Building Committee meetings are open to the public, so we can all attend. I also think that there needs to be more public discussion about the historical nature of the building that is there now, as well as the funding for the project. So, that's sort of what happened today.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
So I attended for a little bit and I did hear Madam Chair's input to that and she was certainly the sole person, as she discussed, kind of maybe planning for the future on that for fifty years out. I was able to take a tour of the police station, which I recommend everybody try to do, the inside of it. It looks beautiful outside, right? I'm quoting a phrase now, that it's really the queen of the commons. If you look from Simons Park and you look over there, the school really is beautiful and it really enhances the common. And the thought is to knock it down and, you know, certainly there's a consultant that's working with us about, you know, what's going to cost if they redo that building and, you know, renovate it. You know, you certainly like to, to keep it there, if it still has good bones, but there's, there's holes in the roof and, you know, the windows are, you know, are breezing through in the wintertime and, you know, it's just a lot of water damage on there and I think it is, from the renovations that they've done in the nineties and the two thousands, I think it was probably not a good decision to put the police station in there at the beginning when they moved out of the annex. And you hate to see something like that go. The only thing that I saw as I walked around there was really to, you know, take that nineteen ninety-two annex that they added on, get rid of that. If you can gut the whole thing, you know, and think of a way to save that building and kind of take the police station separately to that and think about more options. They seem to be sold on these two sites that we talked about before, limited to those two limited sites. But you think, Madam Chair, you said that you didn't need a consultant to tell you that those sites that they looked at were, their alternate sites were.
Inappropriate.
Inappropriate to begin with. So that was an easy five-minute review of that.
What were the two sites?
Well, was the Treatment Center over on Millsix Turnpike, the Treatment Center on Millsix Turnpike, and then there's a piece of land between Meadowbrook School and the, the, yes, Rogers Piano, there's right between there, which is, which is upland, because when I went to Meadowbrook, we used to play around that area and they had concerns about access and things like that. But they didn't even talk about, you know, the other, we thought, I know Joe and I, you have talked about some opportunities for other properties in town, but certainly, I think there's a narrow scope here where there's a school situation going on where there's opportunities for buildings here and it's just, there's not a thought there to say, let's look at a bigger picture, to say, you know, with that in mind is kind of unfortunate, the conversation, particularly about the historic building. And I'm surprised that nobody from the Historical Society was there as part of that group. And there's some conversation about a historic building maybe is something that should only be, something that's from the Revolutionary War.
Yeah, one person did say that.
Versus the character of the town is not Revolutionary War buildings, for the most part, and if you kind of look at them, it was kind of an interesting comment.
They're creating a definition of what historical is, Revolutionary War.
That was one person, Mr. Saffertini, what's his name? He was the former school superintendent, I think, remember Saffertini?
Saffertini?
Yeah, he was there.
Saffertini, yeah.
Yeah.
It was an interesting comment. But, I mean, it was just, I was taken, kind of taken back with that.
The building doesn't date back to the Revolution.
So it's not, because you're, so lock it down, it's not historical. So I think if it could be some historical members, they're going to go back to the Historical Society, it'd be great if somebody was actually there from the Historical Society to talk about it. It is in really tough shape and it's, you know, I went to Union School, the inside of that building looks nothing like the Union School, so there's no kind of historical characteristics internal to the building. It's just the external part of it.
You can only save the shell.
The shell would be, and I think it's worth saving.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's not worth saving. What you do with the inside will not be restorative.
Well, you need the time to do that.
Right, and nor is the Grand View Farm, but.
No, well.
It's the setting for our downtown.
Part of it is.
Exactly right.
I mean, we try to keep little pieces of it, but the reality is, it was, they told us it wasn't salvageable at the time.
And it's beautiful now.
Now look at it.
It's great at the town center. You know, I kind of thought about, you know, if you, if you take the, what the proposals are and we think about the Human Services Building, if we had taken that, would have been a paved parking lot right in the front of that building, right? So I think they, if they can take what Madam Chair was suggesting and we take a bigger picture of this thing, it'd be great to open up some minds here versus the short term, which we all understand the police station needs to be there and replaced because it's just, it's a non-functionability, and it probably was from the beginning. That's just my input, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I will say that our director did reach out to town administrator relative to this, but not exactly on the same issues, saying that she thinks it's important that the town undergo, hire a consultant to undergo a full review of all of the town properties.
Oh, yes.
And so that we, in the future, we know what's available, because this, this was not a full review and they did not consider every available property. And there's also, I mean, there's also, outside of that, there were properties that could be considered for purchase as well, but that's a separate subject. So I think it's great that Liz took that on. From what I understand, town administration is amenable to that idea, but they're thinking about it from this point forward.
Right.
From what I understand and from the conversations that I've had, the police department wants a new police station. They are not married to this particular plan or this particular site, they just want what's right for the town and for the police station. But, when I have brought up other locations, I have not, there's been.
No real subject.
No movement, no interest, no discussion on that matter. Not well received. And I think from the perspective of everyone else in the room today, it's a done deal.
It's a done deal.
Well, I think it's the same, you know, when, when, you know, when we, years ago, Bill and I were part of the signed bylaw committee, you know, and, you know, when ninety percent of the signed bylaw committee is made up of businesses, we know what we're going to get when we walk in the room.
Right.
I mean, you know, the businesses want as many signs as they can get.
Right.
You know, I think it's, it's, it's really incumbent on us, it's response, it's our responsibility as a planning board to, to, you know, to embrace, preserve, and, and, as, with everything we have, the history of our town. And, you know, as far as I can ever remember, almost every picture I've seen, every historic picture of the town of Burlington, has been a bunch of school kids sitting out on the stairs in that, on that building. I mean, it's literally, and the beauty of it is that the fact that we have it right on our town common, right in the center of our town. You know, we've been told in the past, oh, you know, there was a historic building down, it was at 121 Lexington Street, we tried to save. We were told, hey, we don't own it, we can't, we can't save that, we don't own it. How many times have we been told that? Now all of a sudden, we own it.
Own it.
And we're going to let them tear it down? Really? We're going to tear down one of the most historic buildings in the town of Burlington? As far as I'm concerned, we'd be irresponsible to allow that to happen. That's my opinion.
I understand, but.
And I get it.
My question is, what is the path?
So, so, right, without, without exhausting every avenue, and I don't think we've nailed the exhausted every avenue.
Certainly.
This has been a project that's, all of a sudden, it just reared its head and next thing you know, it's, it's happening all around us and we're.
Well, I think it was going on without our knowledge.
Well, that's, that's a problem in and of itself.
Yes.
That's right. You know, the planning board should know about these things from day one.
Yes. But I still don't know what the path forward is.
Well, I also, we don't know what it is with the schools, with the school buildings either. What's going on with the school buildings?
Well, I think the planning board should be involved in the building of a school.
I heard that got solved, the school.
No, but my point is this, you know, if, is, are they going to build one school and then they're going to abandon one school? Is that, would that be a site that would be a beautiful site? That school was being abandoned? Would that be, would that be a great recreation center, you know? So we get a downtown center, which would be perfect for.
I agree with you and that's part of the whole.
Public safety building, we got, you know, so many options.
Yeah, that's part of the whole project of assessing all the different properties that the town owns. Town owns all of them, even the school properties, the, the school committee does not own those properties. But what I'm not sure about is, because I've, I've had this, these conversations, I've been saying these things and I'm not getting anywhere. So I guess I'm asking this board how they, how you want to proceed, how you see this working, and I'll be honest with you, I don't have the bandwidth to take this on. I support you if you want to do it and if we as a team want to work on it, that's something else. I don't have the bandwidth to spearhead this.
Same.
I'd like to see what the Historical Commission says, Joe, about that building.
Yeah, I mean.
I know they've done some talking about it, but I don't know if they've ever reached a conclusion.
Right. Yeah, I mean, to be quite honest with you, if the Historic Commission was adverse to saving that building, it would knock my socks off.
I'm sure they're not.
They've, they've been adamant about saving the lesser buildings in, in lesser locations, so I can't imagine they wouldn't.
But have they been effective?
Well, the problem is, you know, how effective can you be when you get, when you have steamrollers?
Steamrollers.
You know, you stand, you stand in front of a steamroller, you get rolled over.
They don't have funding.
Well, right, that's right.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, again, I, you know, you know, we've, in the, years ago, state was supposed to, as part of a swap, they were going to give us, we were supposed to get that, that big state barn in the center of town.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah.
We never got it. Maybe we go to the state and say, hey, now we need a police station. This would be a perfect location for a police station or, you know, public safety, whatever. You know, there's so many options that have not been looked at and I feel like, you know, like you said, and I think you've said it nicely earlier, they're trying to take the quickest, least resistance route and I think that that's, as a planning board, we should be thinking differently than that. We should be thinking that, you know, preserving the history of the town, but at the same time, what are, what are all the other towns doing? You know, Lexington, Bedford, they're building public safety buildings. There's, there's a lot of synergies involved with those things. There's a reason why they do public safety.
Are you saying you ought to spearhead this effort?
I think, I don't think any one person should be spearheading anything. I think the planning board should be taking a position on this. That's, you know, I'm, I'm not telling anyone in particular to spearhead anything.
I mean, I've had the conversation, Barbara's had the conversation, it fell on deaf ears. Liz has had the conversation, it fell on deaf ears. So, I mean, I, I'm not opposed to it, I just don't, I'm, I guess, if we're all feeling the same way and we need to contact the Historic Commission, maybe that's the first step and then see what they say and then from there, who wants to spearhead this initiative? Because I think, you know, the three of us have taken a stab at it and again, it wasn't very well received. I don't have the bandwidth to take that initiative on. I support it. But I think, you know, I think that the first step is, I guess, contact us, you know, Historic Commission. See what we get from there and then have that be presented.
But I think as a planning board, we could be more vocal as a board. We can be more proactive and, and take votes and come up, you know, have, have, you know, votes sent and presented and letters sent and presented and.
Agreed. I mean, what, what I, ideally, what would have happened, which didn't happen, is that when this project was first starting to be discussed, we should have been involved in that process. Therefore, when they started, when they hired a consultant firm to do a feasibility study, we would have been consulted about that feasibility study and we would have said then, this is too narrow a scope. We need to open this up to consider a multitude of other properties and a multitude of other options, such as a public safety building. What I'm trying to figure out now is the, the horse is out of the barn and I don't know how to get it back.
Right, well, you know, so, again, I have some history behind with the Grand View because I was, happened to be at the time, initially, at least initially, the only one on the board of selectmen that wanted to really preserve the Grand View Farm.
We're not going to get the support of the select board on this either.
So we, we literally went to the people in town and the people in town spoke and they said, we want the building to stay there. We want the historic building to stay in the center of town. That was a vote and that's what happened.
Why is the select board not in favor of a public safety building?
I, I, I don't want to speak for them. I will say, from my understanding of conversations that I have had with various members, it's not that they are opposed to a public safety building so much as they, I think there's a few things. The need for the police station is so immediate that they want to go, they want to move quickly and this is the fastest path.
The fire station's in good shape.
The fire station, they tell me, is in good shape and isn't going to need anything for at least fifteen years and even then, it's probably just a renovation, not a new building. They are not in favor of doing anything at the Human Services Site because I'm told the Human Services Building, they've invested heavily in it and it's in excellent condition and so it doesn't make sense to knock it down at this point. So it's not that they don't like the idea of a public safety building. I think they don't see it as necessary right now and they don't see it, they, I think they see it as delaying this project for too long.
Ten years ago.
Yeah, yes, yes.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Through you to, to Joe. Trying to think of compromises. Were the designers, as part of the new police station, able to save the shell of the school building and take off the siding and kind of really make it a part of the new police station? That the shell, the, you know, the facade, the front and maybe a side or two of that existing historic building and really bring it back into what a historically accurate facade of a building? If that was integrated into the new police station, would that be a?
Compromise.
A reasonable compromise that could satisfy, I, I mean, I, I'm not an engineer.
Yeah.
I think that, you know, we're all saying the same thing, but we're not putting an action plan in place. So I, I think that the first step is contacting the Historic Commission, see what they say. From there, we draft a letter to the select board and say, you know, this is our feeling, put it on record and then see what comes back from there. Right now, I mean, we could say, coulda, shoulda, woulda, this, this should have happened this way, it should have been done ten years ago, but, I mean, I feel like we're beating a dead horse on things that we can't change in the past and how do we move forward in a more positive manner and make our voice heard publicly and, you know, documented.
I think Brenda's suggestion for a next step makes sense. I think your suggestion is something that should be considered. I don't know how exactly that would look. I, I, I can't visualize it, but I'm not an architect either, so maybe someone else could. So.
I mean, they, you know, you, here we are, we, they did the same thing with the, the old Kent House, right?
Right.
So they, they had a beautiful plan.
Designed, yeah.
That they added on.
Right.
And kept the historic nature of that and then added on.
Right.
And they, everybody told you how dilapidated that building was, it's not salvageable.
It's worse even.
Came in and said, no, no, we can do that, there's no question about it.
Right.
So there's a, will is a way, the reality is, you know.
Foundation wasn't economically viable.
Because, because, yeah, because of where, the location and all this stuff that, you know, that they couldn't do, but they had nothing to do with the structure. They, they said, yeah, we, you know. Someone said it's not salvageable and said, absolutely, that's right.
I think that's a question that can be asked.
Where there's a will is a way and the fact is, yeah, and, and again, I, to reiterate what Barbara said, I've had conversation with some upper echelon of the police station about this. They've called me and I've had long conversations, I've explained the same thing to them and I got the same exact feeling from them as well. We're open to different ideas.
Feeling, making right of them said it.
We just want, no, I get the same feeling, I get the same response, that basically that, you know, we, you know, we, we're open to ideas, but we want this to happen and I think that's, and I think, you know, unfortunately, I think you have also timeframes that some people are going to be gone within certain periods of time and that wants to be their legacy. Who knows? The reality is that that really shouldn't be the town's concern. You know, the town should be concerned about doing it the right way.
Agreed.
And, and, and having it in the right location and, and everything being right, not, let's get it done because I'm only going to be here for another couple of years and I want it done before I leave.
I'm not, I'm not getting that feeling, really, I, that's not, I don't, I could be naive, I don't, I'm not getting that feeling that that's part of this. I like the idea of trying to find a way to restore that building facade to its original because right now it's got vinyl siding on it, I think, and, you know, put real clavars on it like it's supposed to have and make it look like an old building from the outside and then, I mean, the inside is not salvageable, so if you gut it and then you build an addition, maybe it's possible, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean.
I'd like to find out.
Well, that's right.
Yeah.
And at least you could work with the existing structure and then you could add whatever, you know, you needed to add space, you needed to add new areas and.
I don't think you can work, I think you can work with the shell.
Yeah, well, the existing, the existing structure, right? I mean, that's really the, yeah, I mean, the shell is the shell.
It might even have to be partially rebuilt, even the shell might have to be partially rebuilt. I think the foundation might have to be
Like the Grandview.
Shored up.
Like the Grandview, that's exactly what they did at the Grandview.
Exactly, right, and it's, so. Did you want to speak, Sheri?
Just real quick, about the, two things, Historical Commission, so during the campaign for the Community Preservation Act, we worked with the Historical Commission, and I've spoken with them many times since. Yes, they want to save this building. I mean, Wayne Higgin
I'm sure they do.
Went to school in that building, and so there's, there's no question that they do, but to your point, they have no resources and they don't really understand the process of how to navigate, you know, to say their piece. So there needs to be more vocalness. I keep trying to prod them to, you know, come forward and tell them about the meetings, but, you know, so there's, there's a will, I'm not sure there's, they don't, don't know the way, as far as that goes.
So I think they feel like they're just, their voice would be not, but they need it to be spoken.
They need to keep coming.
They need to relay that because there's not, that's not necessarily the feeling out there.
Should we invite him, them here, sorry, Madam Chair?
Oh, that's okay.
Should we invite him here for the next planning board meeting? Would that be helpful?
Sure.
To the, to the point of the facilities and knowing what all facilities we have, we did have town meeting had a facilities committee, so there is history to go back on. It's been many years, but they don't have to start from scratch. I mean, there is, you know, there are documents, there are paperworks. And to that point, in many communities, we have a wonderful economic development director, she's gone, but wonderful. Many communities have a community development director, and we obviously don't have that, but a person in charge of the, the community part, you know, the residential, the municipal, that's not the commercial part, would be very valuable. That's not going to happen. But to the point of hiring consultants, and, you know, we paid $150,000 for that feasibility study for, well, one viable site and two sites that weren't really viable, and it's not even done yet, they tell me. So, but maybe this board, if you're, you know, wanting to try and broaden that scope, which I agree with, that we should really think about long-term and not just one building at a time as we do, perhaps a consultant to, you know, do that municipal and don't just leave it to the administration to do the municipal review of the buildings and things like that. And so I don't know if that's something coming up to May town meeting, and again, you know, to your point, Joe, that people need to express and come out and talk, and the people need to, they did for the Grandview Farm to save it. There's many people out there that want to save that building, but they need to show up.
Imagine, you're right. And they, they didn't believe me when I said it about the Grandview, and then we did, we hold a few signs, and people like, well, what's this all about? They've taken down the Grandview, you know, people didn't know.
Right, right.
So people just don't know, and it's, you know
It needs to be publicized, it needs to get out there.
That's right.
There's many people that, you know, during the CPA campaign, there were many people that were like, that's, that's a beautiful building to try and save, I mean, the idea of the beautiful building. Anyway, so that was just a couple of comments.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So steps forward. Let's ask staff to reach out to the Historical Commission, invite them to our next meeting, which is the beginning of January. And, you know, we'll talk with them about this. The goal of that, the first step after that, would, I would imagine, be that they need to reach out to town administration and the building committee, and we then also, in, you know, in a sister move with them, can do the same, can write a letter. I think that's the first step, and it's a reasonable first step. I don't think it will do any good. I think it has to be, as you said, something that the town's residents rally behind, or it's not going to happen.
Well, I think people need to, first of all, understand 100%, and this is what I conveyed when I've had conversations with them, but look, I'm, don't, don't think for a second, I don't, I, I'm not 100% behind you getting a structure, getting a building.
Absolutely, yes.
I, I fully believe that, 150%, that they need a new building. It's just, it needs to be done the right way.
As well.
Right, I mean, that's right. Even the Historic Commission, I think they need to understand, we're not, you know, for you to say you want to save, that doesn't mean you're talking against the police department and, you know, and talking against them getting a building, or talking, you know
It's not a binary choice.
It's really not it, that's right. It's not, that shouldn't be the dynamic here. It should be about doing it the right way and being, and being responsible, and being responsible to the generations that follow us to preserve the history of this town that we've all experienced growing up and had the opportunity to experience, and everybody behind us should have the same experience, and that's really
Right.
What it's all about.
I agree. Now, we have to consider also if there was a way to incorporate the existing building or the shell of the existing building into the new police station, that would probably entail using up the entire piece of property to the right, not all the way up to Grandview Farm, but most of that park or field, whatever we call it, if we were to put it in that location. Personally, I don't have a problem with that, but some people do. Some people want to preserve that as a field, so it's just, you know, something that we have to consider.
Yeah, I mean, the fact is, when that was taken for the Grandview, it was, it was part of, the field was part of it.
Right.
So, I mean, you know, I think you could, I think, to be honest with you, looking at this, it's not like they've said we need a massive building, something so much more massive than we have. They may need an expansion, but if you start with the existing structure and expand over, you're less likely to encroach onto that field than you would if you built over there and then took the building down afterwards.
I think it would encroach onto the field, probably not the entire field, but then you also have to figure there's going to have to be parking and stuff like that.
I understand, but that parking can be, you know, we, you can figure the parking out.
Oh, yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying it will encroach upon the field, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, I mean, the problem is that what they're talking about now is building over on that and then, you know, tearing the building down.
No, they're talking about tearing the building down and building in the same spot and encroaching it to the field.
So, right, moving and then, right, and then moving and doing, so they got to move and they got to, you know, again, they talk about inconvenience, I mean, moving, they go to another place and then move it back.
They would have to do that anyway, even if we were going to use the existing buildings, you know, they're going to have to gut it, so the police are going to have to move out, but that, they have a plan for that.
Well, yeah, you could put an addition on while they were still in there, though.
I suppose so, yes.
You could add on to a building.
When is the next committee meeting?
I don't have a date yet, but I will share it as soon as I am told.
Yeah, because I, I heard about the meeting, I think, when you published, you know, this, you know, what was happening here, so, and I just happened to see it and read it, and I said, oh, there's a meeting and I can make it, so.
I will make sure to let everyone know. I don't know yet when it's going to be, but I'm pretty sure it won't be until January.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I also, I don't think it would be, you know, out of question to bring that up, the, trying to find a middle ground.
Yeah, I agree.
At those meetings and say, hey.
And I think parking wise, not to, not to beat a dead horse on this one either, but it's not, they're not getting, they're not getting any more, they're not getting any more cars, right? They're not, it's not like they're expanding because they need more cars and more police.
That's not why they're expanding, no, but they don't have enough space now.
In other words, they can fit all the cars perfectly well in there right now.
I don't think they can fit them perfectly well. I think that they have problems with cars, it's not secure, so it might not be so much a space issue as it is how they are parked. I guess they've had, they've had problems with vandalism of the police cars, that's what we were told.
What?
Yeah.
Really? Right there?
Yeah, isn't that brazen?
Then maybe they should get some surveillance cameras up there.
You've got to be brazen to do that, I think.
And have somebody, have someone come out of the police station when they start vandalizing the cars. I can't, I find that hard to believe, that they can't stop vandalism in the, in that location in the police department.
I'm just telling you what I've been told.
Myself, I think they could probably build such a better structure if, if we could find a spot that should take care of everything, that's like enclosed all these areas, it would be so much easier, and then they could just move from one building to the new building.
Okay.
Yep.
I think we have a plan moving forward. We have a discussion about the recording clerk?
Well, I need to announce to you because I didn't last meeting, because I didn't realize until after the meeting, our recording clerk, Eric, he
He's not here?
He sent his resignation letter, like, before the last meeting, and so we are without a recording clerk. He actually moved down to Foxborough, and I guess he, his job is there, and I think, you know, so I think it's, it's all good, and I support him, and
So it wasn't anything personal?
It wasn't us. It wasn't you guys. It was him.
You gave him a seat away.
Or did he just move to Foxborough so it didn't look like it was personal?
I'm talking about the people on the right side.
I feel bad, I wish I could have said something and we could have, like, you know, I had, you know, I feel bad.
He did a good job.
He did, great.
Send your email on our behalf.
Definitely. But so we, I have reached out to Joanne Faust, we do have a list of potential candidates, and so we will be, we're going to be interviewing them ASAP. So just FYI, that is happening.
Cool. We're about to leave, but I, quickly, one more thing, sorry. Any update on our other open positions?
I have candidates. Now that I have your vote on these things, I'm going to go and email them tomorrow and say
Okay.
Would you like to interview next week?
Good, we need to move on that. Okay, great, thank you.
That's what I would like to do. Madam Chair.
Just one, just a couple of things, maybe, if I can. There was a, there was a planning board meeting last, last Monday, Wednesday, on the Mall Road.
Was there? That wasn't a planning board meeting?
Well, it was, it, it
It was advertised by the planning board, but it was about, it was with the consultant Mall Road rezoning project.
Yes.
And I got a call like a half an hour beforehand, said you're going to be there. I said, I have no idea what it is. Did anybody go to that?
I attended virtually.
Okay, you guys did?
Yeah.
Anything come out of that?
Uh.
Planning board meeting?
Good discussion.
I didn't come.
Yeah. It was kind of like a reporting of what they're going to present, which like I've seen before. But I think from my perspective, it was one of the best, kind of, it was in the annex basement, my favorite spot for meetings, and I think it went really well. I think the, it was, I kind of felt like it was, the consultants did a really, really good job this time of kind of framing everything in it.